Hello Jan.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
Where are you at?
What now?
I said where are you at?
Oh, I'm sitting at home. I just had my hip replaced seven days ago, so I'm just kind of sitting here waiting on Zoom meeting.
Uh huh, that's right. I remember you saying that. How's it going so far?
It's actually going great. I mean, I'm in that healing process and I don't like that because I feel like I'm ready to go. But, you know, it's, it's just, as I say, a process.
Yep, understand. Wally had his replaced a couple of years ago, so. Several years ago, and I remember going through that with him.
Good morning Jan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. How are you?
Just lovely for Thursday.
Do you want your video back?
Yeah. Lovely for Thursday.
Move it over to you. Or any day.
I get confused on my days quite often. I kind of laugh at myself. Earlier, I said it was Tuesday, then I'm like, no, no, no. David and Fred, and now Bob Hoffman, I don't know if y'all can hear me, but we are trying to promote the three of you all to panelists. So you should be seeing some requests on your screen. There you come, alright.
Okay, I think I'm here.
You are Fred, thanks for being here.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning Bob. Hey, as you guys are coming in, everybody has the standard name of board member, so if you know how to correct your name, go for it. If not, as we get moving forward, we will correct your name, so we know who each one of you are. Give them an opportunity. Cause all. He should have been a. Hi Amy with Board Effect, I see you there. Can you change your name on your screen or don't ask to do that for you?
Um, let's see, I didn't notice I came as board member, let me.
Yes.
See if I can figure that out.
URL distinction from the other day.
Yes. Here we go.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning all.
Morning.
Good morning.
Everybody will be responsible for your own meeting at this time. Also, as you come in, if you use the portal through Board Effect, all the officers, you're coming in as board member. So if you know how to change your name, great, change it. If not, we'll change it for you here momentarily. Good morning, everyone. I mentioned a little bit ago, or I don't know, a few minutes ago, everybody's responsible for their own meeting at this time. And also those that use the link from Board Effect, you're coming in, your name is appearing as a board member. If you could update your name, that would be fantastic. If you need us to assist you with that, we can do that as well.
Amy, good morning. I see you're online. Are you with us?
I am, yes. Good morning.
Good morning. So what we're going to do is we have a couple of things we're going to do, call to order, roll call, minutes, and then we'll take it over to you, okay?
Okay.
About 10 minutes after the start.
No problem. I looked at the agenda, I saw where I was placed, so we're good.
Thanks Amy.
You bet.
Alrighty, so we'll start about, I don't know, three minutes, I guess, is that right? Yeah, three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Holly.
Hey, this is quite the program, quite the program, guys. I went through it this morning, I know Amy will help me a lot, but this is, this is incredible, where you can get so much information in one area.
Good Amy. We'll talk about it a little bit, but you know, we presented this to the prior executive committee, and I think until one uses one of these portals, it isn't clear, but once you realize, oh my gosh, I can just click on the portal and find all the information, all of it. I don't have to worry about, is the right revision, am I missing anything? Everyone's looking at the same document, it makes it quite easier. So I'm hoping that this works out well for us. We'll see how that goes. Why does my information say board member? I don't remember typing that in. Is it just clicked on the link?
Yes, that is correct. You must miss my last announcement. All members are responsible for their own meeting and meeting. The link will bring you in as a board member. So if you could get that changed, great. If not, if you need our help, we could do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
That will be this, this will be the standard setup going forward.
Okay.
That is so our members, if they wish to watch this, they are able to.
The last, okay, so can you change my name? I can't see, your last message was just to click on join meeting.
If you're a panelist, this is a standard webinar panelist, so you should be able to right-click on yourself and take care of that, but Barb just did that for you, Pear.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, there, it's renamed, I got it.
I don't know why she.
Alrighty, it's nine o'clock, where I am. The meeting's going to come to order at 10:00 AM Pacific. You could record that, Terry, I'd appreciate that, we're starting. So we're going to do a call to order, a roll call, approval of minutes. Then we're going to step out for a tad and let Amy do a presentation on Board Effect, and she'll drop off, continue our business. So first, a couple of just the standard mandatory comments, to just avoid disruption, just make sure your phones are turned off. You're, more importantly, that you're on mute when you're not speaking, you can manage that. In fact, the best practice is to remain muted until you're ready to speak. We turned off the chat during the meeting. We kind of thought that we'll try for this meeting that if we have a discussion, we'll have it with the whole board. It's kind of hard to be juggling a Zoom camera, electronic device, look at the agenda, and chat at the same time. It's being broadcast live on Zoom, as y'all know, the members have the ability to view it. If they went to airshoeclub.org/ibt, there's a link to this meeting, and it's, I believe, we're streaming on YouTube now, I'm not sure. Is that correct Lori?
Yes, we are streaming on, it's being recorded and streaming live on YouTube, correct?
Great, thanks. And the protocol for raising hands will be using the raise hand button on Zoom. You'll wait for acknowledgement from me, the board president, before speaking, and we'll go in order in general of hands raised. That seems to have worked well for us in the past. There may be a couple of exceptions from that. So if anyone doesn't know how to click raise your hand, just sort of play around with it for a bit, and hopefully we'll get to that point. But if you can't raise your hand electronically, then we'll figure out how to find you. We're going to waive opening ceremonies for this meeting. It is by Zoom, it's a little more complicated to do something like that by Zoom. Any board member may speak during this meeting, in fact, we encourage it. One of the things I think that this board, and by the way, every board has a different personality. This board has expressed a lot, is that we really want to be able to talk about the topics. I'm going to be trying to keep the discussion at the board meeting to the policy, strategic issues, and so we can focus on that level. If there's clerical things we need to fix, let's try to fix those on the side or afterward. We may even have to do a secondary electronic vote on any housekeeping language, but let's try to keep the board discussion, where you guys can contribute the best, in my opinion, and that's on what's right for the club, what's right for our members, our finances, etc., not on miscellaneous language that we can address later. Members are able to contribute into this. Lori, did we have any member comments coming in, or Terry?
No Eric, none has come through our website. And I do not see Terry online right now, just side note.
Okay, can we reach out to her privately? And we meant to flip Amy before Terry. We're going to do the roughly two minutes per person. It's really hard to manage on a Zoom call, but we'll do our best. I'm going to also ask that if you've already spoken once on a topic, please reserve comment until everyone else has the reasonable chance to offer it. If we do a roll call, then Terry, when she gets on, will be conducting a roll call vote. So without objection, these are the rules of the meeting. Are there objections to the rules of the meeting? Alright, hearing and seeing no objections, those are the rules of the meeting. Alright, Terry, are you on yet to do roll call? Okay, first I see John Holly, go ahead John.
Eric and Lori, I noticed I have a list of participants on the right side of my screen, but I still have the sign up saying, welcome, meeting will begin shortly. Is there any way to get to the gallery of everyone? Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Thanks. By the way, I, you know, this is all new for a lot of us, you know, the Zoom meeting is not new, but you know, we have new board members. We're working a little bit slightly different agendas, so just like John said, and other of you had, have been there, advance this meeting. Raise your hand if you've got a question or a suggestion, because we're going to kind of learn this pattern together as a group. Alright, do we have Terry yet? Alright, so we're going to shift to, and by the way, y'all noticed the numbers, we're going to shift down to the board portal update. So I'm going to hand it over to you Amy, and go do your update, and then we'll figure out where we are in the rest of it.
Thanks. Sounds good. Can you enable participant screen sharing, so I can share my screen, please?
You should be able to, Amy.
It's telling me host disabled participant screen sharing when I click on the icon.
Okay, hang on one second. Go to main screen. Do multiple for a dance. Yeah, there you go.
Alright, you should be good now Amy.
Yep, here it comes. Got it, thank you. Alrighty, and y'all are handling the recording, so I'm just going to go ahead and jump into it. Thank you for giving me some time in your meeting this morning to introduce your new Board Effect platform. I hope you're going to be really excited about what I have to present here today. So let's go ahead and get into it. So just an overview quickly of the agenda for what I'm going to cover in this 30 minutes that I have with you. I'm going to show you how to access your meeting information in the portal, review annotating meeting books, how to get into your meeting book, make notes in it, talk about some additional resources and next steps. There are some handouts that are in the meeting packet that I provided, that are like little quick start guides with screenshots to help you navigate the portal, but we'll do a little site tour. What I'm going to present is probably going to take about 20 minutes, and then if there's questions, there'll be time for that at the end of my presentation. So if you have due questions, please hold them for the end. Alright, let's go ahead and get into it. So first of all, how are you going to access Board Effect? So there's two ways to do that. You can access Board Effect from any computer using any internet browser via the URL you're going to receive or have already received for the portal. I'll be using Google Chrome as my browser, but you can use whatever browser you would normally use to access the internet. We just recommend that you keep your browser up to date to ensure you're having the best experience with Board Effect. Now, we also have apps for iOS and Android devices, which can be downloaded from their relevant app stores. Just search Board Effect, all one word, it'll pop up, you can download the app and then log in. The Board Effect mobile device app is almost identical to the web with just a few minor differences, which I'm going to go over as part of my presentation. So let's go ahead and take a little tour of the web platform now. So let me go ahead and switch over to my browser. So here we are on your Board Effect platform. Eric and Lori have put a lot of work into getting this set up for y'all. So we've got a little welcome message here at the top, there's some getting started videos that are from Board Effect that have been inserted here. And then your event cards sit right here on the homepage, giving you the information that you need for upcoming meetings. We'll get to the event card kind of. Um, and then your event cards sit right here on the homepage, giving you the information that you need for upcoming meetings. We'll get to the event card, um, kind of as the main event here, but let's kind of do a little site tour really quick before we jump into that. So you've got a menu here on the left-hand side of your screen. So home is where you land right here. You've got access to workrooms that you sit in. So whatever board or committees you sit on, those are the workrooms that you'll be assigned to and you'll see them here in this list. So for me, I'm currently assigned to Board of Trustees and the Exec Committee. And the same information that I see on the homepage for these events, like this Board of Trustees meeting here, I can also get if I went into the workroom. So if I clicked on Board of Trustees, it takes me into the workroom. And these events sit here as well, but I can get them right from the homepage, which is nice. I don't have to go digging around for those. While we're in the workroom, one thing I do wanna show you, it's not normally part of my tour, but Eric wanted me to cover discussions with you. So just really quick, if you're in a workroom and you come under this collaborate button right here, there are some options in here. So we wanna look at a discussion. This works like a message board. So I'm gonna click on this discussions link right here. There's other things you can do and collaborate, but we're focused on discussions, um, for this. So I set up a sample discussion here just to show you what it looks like. We wanna have pizza or tacos. So we're gonna have a discussion about that. So this is the main discussion. So I'm gonna click on this. It's only open for a set amount of time. They can be open-ended, but this one's gonna close tomorrow. Um, and so if I click on the title here, it takes me in. I can add entirely new topics or I can reply to the topic that's already here. So if I click on this topic, it takes me in. I can add a new, here's a reply, I would prefer pizza. Um, or if I put in here, I'm making another reply. How about tacos? It's Tuesday. Um, so I'm gonna submit that comment. I could attach documents, as you might have seen there, if I hit another new reply. There's a browse option right here. If I wanted to include, um, a, an attachment of some sort, if I wanted people to look at a document, I could even add a document to my comment here. And if I want people to get email notifications when I reply to the discussion, I can click this box and the users who are invited to participate in the discussion will get an email, um, that I have replied to a topic in here. So this is a, a tool that I don't think gets enough love or enough use. So I hope that you will find it useful and I would love any feedback from you, Eric, as you kind of use this a little bit more to see how it works out for you. Um, cuz I don't think enough people utilize it as, as, as much as it could be. So, um, so keep an eye out for discussions to crop up under here. Like I said, this one that I set up is gonna disappear tomorrow, but if I click on discussions again here, you'll notice it took me right back out to this main screen. So if there were upcoming discussions, you can view closed discussions, even if, you know, nobody can comment anymore. You can still view old ones as well. So this is a nice way to keep discussions out of email and, you know, centered in the the web platform where everybody can comment and access it and not have to dig around for, you know, who replied last in the email and where is, are we in the chain? This right here is, is a message board for you to do a similar thing. So that's in the workroom. So it's always in the workroom where the discussions are happening. So for example, like I said, we're in the Board of Trustees here. So, um, those are the main things you're gonna be doing with workrooms, either participating in discussions or finding your meeting information. But again, the meeting information will always be on the homepage as well. So let's now talk about the library for a sec. So the library here, if I click on this, takes me here. Uh, the first section I land in here at the top is the resource library. This resource library is accessible to everybody regardless of workroom assignment. So everything that's in here is for everyone. So you'll see some information that, um, has already been put in for you. There's some getting started info for Board Effect. Um, constitution bylaws, rally info, so all kinds of good stuff already put in here for you. Um, so you would just, you know, click into the folder that you wanted to view, click on the, uh, document you want, and then it's gonna open in a new tab in your browser here, and then you can view it right from here. And then if you wanna navigate back, use this little crumb trail rather than the back button on your browser. If I wanna go back to the main resource library, I'll click on it from here to take me back to the top level of the, the folders. And then there are also workroom specific libraries. So again, those two, uh, group, workgroups that I sit on have libraries that I can view from here. So the Board of Trustees is here. Again, there's more information that's been placed in here specific to the Board of Trustees group, and then the Executive Committee has their own personal library. And this is also where you're gonna come to view past meeting books. So you'll notice this section here labeled meeting books is where any past meeting books, oh wow, you've been busy, um, can get placed so that you can go back and review them. So if I click on one of these, I can view an old meeting book as well. So let's look at how you're gonna view a new meeting book. So let's get there in just a second here. A couple more things real quick on the tour. Uh, here in the directory is where you're gonna find your user information. So you've got a list here of all of the people who have logins for this account, for this site. If I wanted to look at somebody's information, I could click on their name and it's gonna bring up their profile information. Right now, it just contains your email address, so folks know how to reach you. You can also update your own profile, though. Like if I come up here, I'm gonna wanna find my own. I should, I am in here. So here's mine. I can search up here if I wanna quickly find a certain person. If I click on this little arrow next to my name, I can edit my profile. So if I wanted to add, um, additional contact information, either work information or personal contact information, if I click on these little headers, it expands them. And I can fill this out with it, my personal information. I can set up an alternate contact info here. So if I wanted a secondary email address to also be receiving notifications from the platform, I could put that in here and check this box to see, see the address, and then both emails would be included, um, in any communications. So I can also add a profile picture. If I come down to more and go to attachments, I could upload a photo, my resume if I wanted to, if that's, uh, relevant, but that's kind of the basics of managing your profile here. So I'm just gonna go ahead and close this window and also close this window. So here I am right back at home. Um, messaging, I'll talk about briefly. This is a way for you to send messages to member, to members' emails from within the platform. So just know that messaging is not an internal thing with Board Effect. The discussion message board is its own separate thing, but this messaging system here sends an email from the platform to whoever you've selected from the list. So you could indicate multiple people from here. You could also choose people by, uh, category. So like, if I wanted to get everybody on the board member, uh, on the board, I'd click board member, continue. Everybody's automatically added this message for me and I can send it out. So this message goes from me to the inbox of all the people that I have selected. And then when they respond back to me, I get an email in my inbox. And I will also get a copy of the message that I sent initially in my email so that I can keep it for my records. It's, messages are not stored or retrieved from within the Board Effect platform. It's just an easy way to send a message out. Um, so and your admins will be probably using this frequently to alert you when there's things that need your attention in the platform. So that's messaging. Um, approvals is also something you'll get into more down the road. If there is an item that needs a digital signature or approval between meetings, um, you'll receive a notification in this menu, a little, uh, red flag will pop up here and you'll probably get a notification in your email from your admins, letting them know there's a document that you need to sign, maybe a confidentiality agreement or sign to acknowledge you received your handbook, something like that. So that's what will happen under approvals. And a couple more menus here really quick. The help menu, it's always good to know where to find your help. So right here, under the question mark in the upper right-hand corner, we're gonna click on that. And you can open the knowledge base from here. So knowledge base is our online user manual. So everything you would need to know about using your Board Effect platform can be found in here, and you can search it by keyword. You can scroll and browse it by topic, view the articles of these different sections. There's information about using the apps, uh, using the collaboration tools. Here's, we talked about discussions, participating in a discussion. If you need some reminders about that, you can find that information in here as well. Um, so this first section where you land is geared towards boarding committee members, and there's also a section for administrators and the things that they do on the backend. So great resource, always, uh, please utilize the knowledge base. There's a lot of great information in here. So I'm gonna go ahead and close this tab, puts me right back here in the webpage where I was before. You can also contact our support team. If you're having a technical issue, something's not working correctly, you can hit contact support to get the email address and phone number for our support team. I know it says eight to eight right here, but they are available twenty-four seven. So generally speaking, when you reach out, you'll be able to get ahold of somebody. And again, that just opened in a new tab. I'm gonna close it. And then your internal system administrator is Lori and her information is here as well. If you ever need to reach out to her, she's a great first stop for questions. And then if she can't get the answer, she can get to me or help you, um, get the info you need. So that is the help menu. This is just a user menu, so you have access to your profile. You can change your password and sign out from this other little menu here in the corner. And there's also a search function. So if you wanna locate information in the platform, you could do a keyword search. Um, so if you're looking for something that might be somewhere in the library or in a meeting book, you're not sure where, this search will bring up, um, the information that you're looking for, as long as it's in a place that you have access to. So everybody searches, gonna show something a little different. If you're assigned to a different spot, you're gonna have access to search the places where you have permission to be. So I'm gonna go ahead and close that. Um, keep an eye over here on news. There's nothing in here right now, but you might see little news items pop up in here that you can click on and review. Um, those will be added by your administrator. If there's like maybe an interesting article or blog post they wanna point your attention to, um, they can link it over here for you to review. All right, let's get into your meeting materials here. So I'm gonna scroll down and here's the meeting card for today's meeting. So I know when and where it's happening. Um, I can RSVP right from here. Everything I need for this meeting is right here on this card. I clicked this join meeting button. That's what got me into my Zoom today to join the Zoom. So if I hit join meeting, it's gonna automatically launch me into Zoom into the panel. Um, I can also export this information to my calendar. So if I hit export, I can export to Outlook, iCal and Google all from here. I can also subscribe to calendars. If you're familiar with subscribing to a calendar, you can find that information here under export and subscribe. And if I click subscribe, it gives me a URL that I can plug into my Outlook or my Google Calendar so that all the events that are added to this calendar will automatically get put on my personal calendar. So you can subscribe to those events, um, if you want to. And then this export events lets you export just a certain date range of events if you didn't wanna commit to subscribing to the whole thing. Um, all right, so I've RSVP'd. I also maybe wanna add a note. This add notes here lets you alert people, maybe you're gonna be late. You can let people know, hey, I'm running ten minutes late. If I hit submit, that's gonna show up on the guest list. If I wanted to view more information about this event, I can click on the title right here and it will take me into the event page. Um, and so there's a little note in here that our reports were due on July two thirty, twenty-first. It's always good to click in and view the event in case there's any additional information shared in here. And I can see the guest list. And so look at all these folks who RSVP'd. This is great. And somebody even already figured out how to do notes. Fantastic. This is great. So folks are, uh, figuring it out. Um, so that's how you would interact with the event. And then I'm gonna come back out here to the homepage. And finally, let's look at the book for this meeting. So I wanna review a meeting materials ahead of the meeting. I'm gonna come in here and click book. Once the book's been made available to me via, from the admins, it'll show up as that book button on the event card. And then here I am in the meeting book viewer. So this is kind of an overview page here of just the headings of the agenda. And I'm gonna click meeting book viewer, this button right here in the upper right-hand corner. And that's gonna actually put me into the book. So this is just a really robust PDF viewer. Um, so what we've got here is, your meeting book is one complete scrollable PDF. So we've got the agenda page here, and gosh, that's small, but I've got a zoom button here. So I can make it as big as I need it to, so that I can read that more easily. I can also use this little pan button if I have to make it bigger. So these edges are off the screen. I can always use pan to drag it here. I'm gonna bump it down a tiny bit here. So you can scroll, you can use the page flip, um, buttons down here. I can also manually enter a page number in this box down here and press enter. It'll take me straight there. Oh, hey, look, this is my handout. Uh, that was not on purpose. Um, so you've got different ways that you can maneuver the book. You can also maneuver it from this, um, navigational agenda over here on the left-hand side. So if I click, I can open these different subcategories and anywhere in here, but there's an attachment. If I click on it, it's gonna take me to it. And so I can also use this as a quick way to navigate around the book as well, cuz I wanna make sure that I can, you know, jump to the attachment that I wanna be looking at at the given time. And again, these are in landscape. This is where that pan button comes in handy. I can always move it around like this. But I can also move these two, uh, columns over here. So if I wanna hide the navigational agenda on the left here, I can click this panel icon in the upper left. It hides that. I can hide this comments field, which I'm gonna talk about here in a second, by clicking comments here in the upper right. And now I just have the book. And so if I need to get a good look at it, I want those out of my way, I can move them. So I'm gonna bring them back in though, cuz I do wanna talk about annotations as the last piece here. So let's say I wanna make a note in the book for my own use. These notes are private that you put in here. Think of them as scribbling in the margin of a paper book. So let's say I'm gonna come up here, I'm gonna click on annotate, and that's gonna give me my annotation tools right here. And so I like this little, uh, flag note guy, so I'm gonna click on that tool, and then I'm gonna click in the book where I wanna place that flag. So it's right here. I can change the color. I could delete it. I can also move it. But actually, to put the comments, I'm gonna come over here to the right margin, and I'm gonna put my notes here. So maybe I wanna remember to bring something up about billing or something. So I'm gonna hit save. That saves my note. Again, like I said, I could change the color. I can also drag it to a different portion of the screen just by clicking and moving it around. I can drag it within this page, but I can't move it to another page without using, um, the move button here. This move button in this little menu strip lets me move it to another page altogether. So if I don't want it on this page, I'll say I want it on page forty. I can press forty and I can hit move, and now this note is on page forty. And I could further move it within this page. So all the annotations tools work very similarly. Um, so I could also do inline text if I wanted to place a note directly in the page. It can go right here like this, and I have those same options to, um, move it around, change the color, delete it, things like that. And as you notice, every time I add a note, it pops up over here in my comments field. And so any note that I add shows up over here as a card that I can then click on and it takes me right to it. So these act as bookmarks or great little anchors for you to get a quick link right to the page you wanna remember to comment on. Um, if you have a lot of notes that build up over here as cards, you'll notice they always, um, arrange themselves in page order. So you can scroll them here. You can also search them. So if you have a ton in here and you're not sure what page your billing note was on, if you type the word billing up here in the search field, it's gonna narrow it down to only the notes that include that word. So lots of nice little tools in here that you can use. Um, there's highlights. So if I wanted to highlight some text on a page, I could do that. Again, it shows up over here. I could change the color of my highlight. I have free hand draw if I wanna circle or draw on the page or highlight. I've got an undo and an erase button up here so I can remove something if it's not what I wanted. So feel free to go ahead and play around with these tools. Any notes, any comments you put in here are only ever for you. Nobody else is gonna see what you put in your notes in your book. So that's annotations. So that's the main points of navigating your meeting book here. So don't be afraid to get in here and play around and click around. There's nothing that you can edit or, or undo or break. So, you know, don't be afraid to get in there and play around with stuff. So I'm gonna close the meeting book viewer for the moment here. So I'm gonna close this tab, puts me right back here on the overview page where we were before. I do also have the option to download just the agenda page of this meeting book or the full PDF of the entire meeting book. I can download that onto my computer if I wanna have my own copy. And then I'm just gonna refresh here really quick because I can also download an annotated version of the PDF book as well. So now that I have notes in there, I have a third button here that would let me download my annotated version of the book, or I can get just the plain version without my notes. So that's pretty much everything I'm gonna cover as far as the meeting book viewer, just as a quick overview here. Um, I do wanna take a minute to talk about the app. So let me go ahead and switch my share back to my slides and let's run through some screenshots of the app, just really quick to point out a couple ways that the app is different. So mobile device app, homepage looks very much the same. The welcome message will still be at the top. Your event cards will still sit below with the ability to RSVP, open your book. The navigation menu is under this little hamburger menu up here in the upper left. You just click that to view the menu that would normally be on the left-hand side of the screen. And then when I go to click my book button, when it's time to view my meeting book, I will need to download that book first. So initially, I will need to be on wifi with the device. But once I've downloaded my meeting book onto my device, I can view it through the app, even if I'm offline. So if I'm not on wifi, but I wanna review my book and make some notes, I can still do that. I can add annotations. And the next time I put that device online, those notes will automatically sync up with the web platform. Um, no action is required on my part. It would just automatically sync up. And so when I do wanna view the book in the app, the meeting book viewer just looks a little different. The page flip buttons are upper, in the upper left here. And that navigation agenda that normally sits on the left is under that icon there, and the annotations toolbar is, um, that little icon there next to it. And then, um, to close the book, I would click on the little circle with the X there. So very much similar. Also, obviously, I can swipe to move between pages cuz I have a touchscreen if I was on a mobile device. All right, so some frequently asked questions, and then we'll open it for your questions. Um, so you'll receive email notifications of materials to review or actions to be taken. And those notifications will come from your Board Effect administrator. So you'll receive, um, RSVP response requests, um, to respond to RSVPs for an event. You can do that right from the email. You can do that right from the email without logging into Board Effect. There's a link in that email that you can click that will take you straight to an RSVP page. No login required, just a couple clicks to get yourself responded there to the meeting. The web platform and the app mirror each other with a few cosmetic differences, just like we saw. The app allows offline access to your meeting books after that initial download. Your annotations are automatically saved and synchronized. And your automation, your annotations are private by default. They can, there's a sharing option, but it is disabled for your organization. So your notes are only ever just for you. You're going to receive follow up instructions, including your login credentials if you haven't already. So keep an eye out for that. And don't forget you have additional resources available in the knowledge base. So make sure you're utilizing that tool as well. So that is my presentation. What questions do folks have for me? And if somebody can help me manage hand raising, I see Ginger.
Ginger and then Brad. Okay, Ginger first and then Brad and then Karen.
Good morning, Amy. Thank you for your presentation. My question is, is that when we receive a notification that there are updated materials, how can we get right to the changed materials without downloading the whole document again?
So if the meeting book has changed, when you come on to the platform, you'll see the updated version on the platform. There's nothing else to download if you're coming into the web version. If you're on the iPad, you will need to download the new version of the book, but the system is going to handle that for you automatically when you go to view the book if you're online. It'll tell you, you need to be online with the app if you, if it, if you're not currently. But they will probably put into those messages what has changed so that you know what to look for in the book. So the notification will let you know what's changed.
Okay. Yeah, it didn't, but I knew, I knew kind of where some of the changes were going to be, but not everything. So I've been looking.
Yeah, the pop up message that comes up on the screen that you see doesn't indicate, but the people who are sending out the, the updates can always let you know what's changed.
Okay, that would be helpful, yeah.
Thanks, Brad.
So on the shared comments, if the motion maker is a part of the Board Effects, can we use the shared comments then to suggest changes on the motion before the board meeting?
That is a question for your admins and how you want to handle that.
I think it's great idea. Brad, do you mind if we think about that offline? But I don't see why not. I think once the board gets comfortable using Board Effect, that actually might work well. Actually have everything in one place. So good idea. I've got a note. Laurie, you got that note also? Okay, Karen and then Per. You're mute.
And the discussion thing that you did, it showed it either as a discussion for either the board or the executive committee. If there was a subcommittee, say Per and I were working on something and we wanted to keep record of our discussion back and forth rather than through email, can you set up a discussion just between specific individuals or right now is it only for the two groups that we've got identified?
Every workroom has its own discussion area. So if you are on a subcommittee that has its own workroom setup, which certainly you could if you needed it, because you can add more committees to your platform, then your subcommittee would have its own discussion area in your workroom. So every, every discussion platform is tied to the workroom it's in. So all the members of that workroom can participate.
Okay.
So the process we want to follow is that if anyone wants to spin up a discussion group, just reach out to Laurie slash Barb, but we can, we can do that. We actually had one for CBL and we envisioned having a couple of other ones as well. So absolutely, just let us know if you want to spin one up. All right, Per and then Christine.
I think you actually answered my question indirectly, Eric. I was interested to know who can start a discussion? Is that by privilege and that only certain people can start them and then the rest can participate? Or could anyone start a conversation?
Yeah, the admins of the workroom can start the discussion, but then anybody who's been invited to participate can then add comments to that discussion.
All right, thanks, Per. Christine.
Um, are you able to print off of Board Effect?
So the best way to print, if you want a copy of your meeting book, is to download the PDF with that download button that I showed you. And then once you've got the PDF downloaded to your machine, you can print it.
All right. I think there's no more questions. Oh, Laurie, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I have a statement that Barb actually is going to end up being the administrator. So right now, if you have issues logging in and logging out, contact Barb and she'll, she's going to start managing the platform for us.
All right, thanks. I'm going to move us along. We have a pretty robust agenda. Amy, thank you very much for all your help. They've been tremendous setting it up and I've had to ask her a number of times for help and she bounces back within a very embarrassingly short period of time. So thank you.
I do my best. All right. Thanks for your time, everybody. I'm going to jump out.
Thank you. We have Terry here now. So let's loop back around to 2.0 roll call and then we'll go to 3.0 approval of minutes. All right, Terry, on to you.
Sorry. Good morning. Apologize, I was having trouble getting on. We spent the night in the emergency room. Hal ripped open his arm on preparing brakes on the airstream. So I'm back. Okay, roll call. President McHenry. Here.
Yeah.
Per Hamquist.
Present.
Karen Fisher.
Present.
Millie O'Donnell.
Present.
Matt Hackney.
Present.
Ty Mott.
Present.
Brad Fuller.
Present.
RJ Marquette. RJ Marquette. Absent.
RJ indicated that someone's going to fill in for him and we'll probably loop around to that.
Okay. Christine Baum.
Present.
Brad Briggs.
Present.
Artie Martin.
Present.
Larry Madden. Larry Madden, present, absent? Ginger Slattery.
Present.
Greg Wagner.
Present.
Nancy Fitzgerald. Absent.
Present.
Present. Good morning. Kathy Gezi.
Present.
Stephen Parr.
Present.
Laverne McHenry.
Present.
Joanne Miller.
Present. Present.
Lori Plummer.
Present.
Justin Humphries. Absent. Okay, all present except RJ Marquette, Larry Madden and Justin Humphries.
Okay, so we need to know next, Terry, if we have a stand in for RJ and Larry for voting purposes.
Yes, that would be me, Gary Russo. First VP.
Is it Gary Russo?
Yes, it is.
And you are standing in for?
RJ Marquette.
Okay, thank you very much. And for Larry Madden, Region Six, do we have a substitute?
Hevner, I have not heard from Larry. I was understanding he was going to be on this morning. But I can, I can stand in, yes.
Ja, is that Jan?
Yes.
Jan Havener? Is that how you pronounce your name? You're muted, but I guess that's how you pronounce your name. Okay. And you are standing in for, you are standing in for Larry, is that correct? Region Six?
Yes, that would be correct.
Thank you. So we have all regions present.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, so we definitely have a corner. Thank you for that. Okay, let's move to approval of minutes. Terry, I'll leave that with you to introduce it.
Okay, good morning. So how, I guess I need a little help. I can see the Zoom screen, but how do we get back to the agenda where we can see the minutes? Or do we, do we need to?
I think you could ask the board for a second on the minutes and then ask for discussions or the move to adopt.
All right, good. Are there any discussions on the minutes from the July 30th meeting of the IBT in Maine? Any correction?
The first we did a second. Who seconded the minutes?
Matt has, Matt has his hand up. I don't know if he seconded or what he's doing.
I second.
You second approval of minutes?
Okay, so now we go for discussion, Terry. So I see two hands, Matt and Karen.
Point of order. This is Joanne.
Go ahead.
They do not, the minutes do not need a second. You are asking if they are approved as distributed. And if there is, if no one objects and they are approved as distributed, you just approve them. There is no vote taken on them.
Okay, let's go back to Matt and Karen. Do you guys have any discussion on minutes?
I don't.
Karen?
Yes, I noticed in the agenda that the minutes had been updated as of yesterday. Can you tell us what was changed, Terry? Because there was nothing highlighted or anything.
I did not change anything yesterday. I had sent one small correction to Laurie a bit ago. Is that, is that perhaps what we're talking about here?
The minutes were not updated yesterday. They have not been updated from their original date.
All right, so I'll help you out with this, Terry. So any other discussion on minutes?
Karen has her hand up, Eric.
Karen?
Karen, you're muted.
I'm trying to find the button. So on the, the agenda, it says the minutes of IBT, July 30, 2023 or 2022 Freiberg, and then it says updated 8:17, 10 a.m. That's all I went by. I just, somebody pointed that out to me yesterday that I could tell when things have been updated. It was updated since our meeting on Monday. So I was just wondering what was updated.
I haven't updated anything, Karen, but I appreciate your comment, but there's, there's no update.
Okay. The second question I have is kind of a procedural thing. I noticed in the minutes that when we did the roll call votes, the votes are listed in order of roll call for attendance. But I know our roll call votes are always in random order. And they were taken in random order, but I know this is a repeat reported in roll call ordered. And I don't know if that's an issue or not. Maybe Joanne can add.
I, I think, I think I'm going to move ahead to see if we're ready to move forward on the minutes as written. We have a big agenda today. Without objection, I'd like to move if the minutes be approved of the July 30 IBT meeting. All right, if you know objections, so we're good on that one. Minutes are approved. The next two were.
Is the approval of the EC minutes of August 3rd, they are, are they approved as distributed? Are there comments or concerns about the minutes?
May I speak? This is Joanne.
Sorry, Joanne.
Hey, hang on a second. I get it. So just for the rest of the board, just the way this works, we don't really have to have you all take a look and approve the minutes of the executive committee, nor for actions that were completed by the executive committee. So specifically 3.2, 3.3. In the interest of transparency, I ask that they remain on the agenda. That way you all can see what was talked about at the EC meeting. That's why it's listed there. And also that we can see the logo for Stella Sisters that was approved. You'll notice on the agenda that this is marked as informational. So there's no voting required on 3.2 and 3.3. It's just for your pure information. You're going to see this more and more from me where it's the EC talked about something, you're going to get to see the minutes of the EC. All right, now back to you. Did you have a question about that, Joanne?
No.
Okay, thank you. None. I think we're good, Terry, on your stuff.
Thank you.
And we're going to, thank you, Terry. We're going to move to officer reports. So mine is in there. 4.1 dot one. I'm not going to go through it. I figure if you guys want to read it, you can. If you have questions, let me know. A lot of stuff going on. I also stuck on there the one from July, just for informational as well. And so if there's no questions about my president's report, I see Per has a hand up. Nope. Okay, so now we're going to look for other officer reports. So I'll start with you, Per, and then Karen and then down, down the line of officers. So Per, you first for officer reports and 4.2.
I have an update and I'd like to share my screen if I may. See if I can find the button here to press share. Can you see my screen? Yes, over here. Okay, all right. So as you probably know, I chaired the long range planning committee for the past two years. Having been in the club for 24 years, it's given me some insights into where the club has fallen short. And there were others with similar insights that joined those conversations. We spent considerable time discussing different ideas for how to improve, improve the club as the generations of committee members before me. But one of my biggest frustrations with the committee is that it has been a toothless think tank. I made that clear in my last report. I recommended that the long range planning be shifted over from that sidecar to the IBT itself. So I'm actually super excited that Eric McHenry has picked up on that concern. To that end, he is focusing our fourth IBT meeting on this topic. We expect considerable time at that meeting to be devoted to long range planning. This would be an IBT team effort. For any plan to have legs, we have to believe that it will work. So it is our goal to establish our first actual long range plan that spans administrations and a draft companion tactical plan for the 2024 fiscal year. We then like to see these ideas feed into the 2024 budget planning. I think that's quite amazing. So the thing is, we can't go from zero to 100 miles per hour just like that. To be effective, we need to prepare. And we haven't planned like this before. So we're going to use the LRPC as it exists as a vehicle to prepare for an effective meeting in May. Millie O'Donnell, I would like to invite you all to be part of this process. Some of you may have experience with strategic planning process in real life and that could be really insightful for us. So I'd like to ask that you stay tuned for updates and for invitations to take part in Zoom meetings. Feel free to contact me or Millie if you're interested. And then it is our goal to provide you with an update on our progress of that at the next IBT meeting. That was my update. Thank you.
Thanks, Per. And you guys will see on the Board Effect calendar that I believe a meeting is scheduled. Is it, what day did it start? I've forgotten, Per.
It's the 10th of May that begins.
Okay, and so the 10th is a, if that's a Wednesday, we expect everyone to be, have flown in on the night before and we're going to be starting bright and early on Wednesday. So a full day Wednesday, Thursday, and most of the day on Friday, and then you can travel on Friday afternoon or Saturday. But it's going to be pretty intense. It's not going to be a four hour meeting. It's going to be eight hours every day. So we're going to make good use of our member funds. Thanks, Per. Karen, officer update from you? And then I'll go to Matt and then Terry and then Millie, just random order.
I have no update. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, officer updates?
So I will defer mine until the discussion on the budget.
All right, thank you. Terry, any updates?
I have no updates. I appreciate you all being so patient with me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Millie, any updates from you?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So again, I, y'all raise your hand if we're going too fast. I don't want us to go too fast. I'm hoping we'll spend the appropriate amount of time on that the media issues. So I'm trying to get us to that. And in fact, the next one is that. So the next one, of course, is there's been a lot of discussion, as you all are aware, on how we're shifting the roles from the IR, why we're doing it, who made the decision? You know, is it good for members' financial impacts? And so I've asked Laurie, our corporate manager, to spend a little bit of time, actually a reasonable bit of time going through this with y'all. Okay, Laurie, on to you. 4.3 dot one.
Okay, thanks, Eric. And just housekeeping side note, we have two folks that have jumped on. Your list is board member. If you could please update your name, you do not have your cameras on. But if you could update your name, that'd be helpful for us on managing. But if you could update your name, that'd be helpful for us on managing managing the meeting. So I put together, I'm going to share my screen, maybe first day on Zoom. Hopefully. Can you see me? Can you see my screen?
Yep, can see it.
Perfect. Perfect, perfect. Okay, so here we are talking about international rally planning. So just to give a high level history points on the rally, we've had multiple management styles for international rally over the last 66 years. The previous executive director was heavily involved in site location and contract discussions until a change in HQ around 2000. The IR, the IR has paid the club $45,000 a year for rally support until about 2015 rally in Farmington, New Mexico. And that was during the time of declining attendance where we only had about 350 to 450 rigs, but HQ did not stop the support.
Lori, I don't, Lori, I don't believe your slides are advancing, but it could be me.
Yeah. You may need to share the presentation screen as opposed to the screen where you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There we go. All right, are you guys seeing that one now? Hello?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. So where was I? So yeah, the IR had been paying the club $45,000 a year for support until 2015. And streamlining the IR process has been in transition since about 2018. Our timeline, rally timeline planning, we want to start at least four years out with the prospect, prospective list of sites identified. Let the executive council review the list, introduce ourselves to the chamber to our local folks to see if it's a viable location. Three years out, we'll have a list of finalists that we'd like to take to the board to get our preferred venue selected, engage with the local regions and clubs, members of the area for feedback, and follow up again with the Chamber and Visitors Bureau. Two years out, do a pre-site visit, hopefully venue funded, can complete a contract, sign, do the space and parking assignments, meet with local again. I'm sure as much, you know, more we can work with the local Chamber, Visitors Bureau, more goodies that we can get, you know, to our rally. That's the whole goal of, of trying to make good relationships with those folks locally. And then also collect local resources. And when I say local resources, we always build a book for member services. Check things out like laundromats, you know, how close is Walmart, propane, those type things is what we always start looking for to get that information prepared for our members. We do realize Google's out there. A lot of people use Google, but a lot of people still prefer not to have to use Google. They like recommendations. A year out, we plan to visit five to six people, which is club funded or and or rally funded. We'll finalize the details of rally, and then we start our volunteer recruiting. Three weeks out, three, actually, it's two to three weeks out, and of course, this varies on the venue. This is when our ground crew will arrive. Typically, when I've negotiated with contracts, this is covered by the venue because it helps them with their resources. So they don't have to have their people. Our people will start doing the majority of the work. Then two weeks out, the IR planning team arrives and we'll start filtering in the committees. And then, of course, we'll have the rally, and then the post rally would be a debrief with volunteers and then survey the rally attendees. Rally locations are going to rotate or have been rotating, I should say, throughout the country. Normally, we do east, west, middle. Is how we've been doing it for the last five or six years. Next, you'll see we have a proposed committee reorganization. I don't know how familiar some of you are, but I know when I first started, we've had about four layers of of report to stations, I guess, if you want to call it, where a committee chair would report to a regional officer, a regional officer would report to a executive committee member, and then that executive committee member would report to the president. So about 2018, 2019, we removed the region officer layer, just went from committee to executive committee, and then to the president. And so over the last, as we proposed this committee, what we're looking at is a format or a structure with what we would call super chairs. Or somebody who would help whoever the team liaison is organize folks. And you'll see the example on the screen. I use Larry Owen. I think most of you all know who Larry is, our parking guru. So he would be part because actually he works with all these folks on the outside infrastructure. And of course, that infrastructure is critical to any rally. Because if the infrastructure on the grounds isn't, isn't well maintained, or if we don't have it together, our attendees will definitely feel that. Moving on, the goal, as we've been working on this transition, is to streamline process, make this a member focused rally. As we mentioned, 2023, there will be no meetings. It's going to be about rally, bringing people together, because that is what keeps this club going, is the relationships built within this club and so unique to the club. Providing members with a multi-year schedule of IRs. We are already getting asked where our 2025, 2026 is. I think it's crazy. I can't plan much more than a week out in my personal life, but some folks are planning four or five years out, which is good for them. I'm excited. They want to continue. And the airstream club going that far out. We want to bring continuity from year to year to improve processes instead of retraining those that are in new roles, because again, that's how we've had the structure. Continue to develop efficiencies and operations to conserve resources. Support all volunteers by handing over defined tasks so volunteers can also enjoy the rally by providing a support network and resources to eliminate frustration and finding answers, resolve attendee issues so volunteers do not have to work with volunteers throughout the year, listening to ideas for improvement, and provide consistent messaging to our attendees. And just a couple of side notes on that, is my experience working with volunteers. I think most of you know I came from animal welfare world before I got here. Volunteers love to volunteer. All of you are prime examples of that. You guys are what I call the overachievers when it comes to volunteering, because you've been taking on a big role. But a lot of folks, when they volunteer, they volunteer to feel good about themselves and giving. But we don't want them to be frustrated. A lot of times, if you see frustration in a volunteer and they don't enjoy volunteering, then they're not going to come back the next time. And so that's one of the primary things we want to eliminate. When I talk about resolving attendee issues, for example, I can tell you in Freiburg, we had a member that was not behaving very nicely. Was being quite bludgeoned to a volunteer and Ms. Barb stepped in between and resolved the issue because our thought process as staff members is no volunteer deserves that type of treatment. And that we will, we will definitely help alleviate that situation. Or at least that's our goal. So that's the quick overview. If anyone has any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd like to entertain questions now, please. Again, this is a significant thing for us, and I know there's been discussions on the side. I want to make sure that the board is supportive of this approach and/or any suggestions the board has to make this more successful. Matt, go ahead.
So I think it's important that the board understand this is part of a long term move back to where we were previously, although I would say we didn't have staff online on the ground at, in the distant past, we did have a very strong club leader who was on the ground and who'd been a rally director for quite some time. I would also like to point out that this is a strategic decision made by the executive committee beginning in 18. Now, I don't know that the IBT's ever been asked to weigh in on the topic, and I think I'm encouraged that you're asking them to do so now, and that concludes my comments.
Thanks, Matt. Other comments or questions before we move, move on? Okay, so we're going to move on, but again, I think I'll probably try to just check it one more time at the roundtable. If you guys have any further thoughts, I don't want you all to fill out a corruption through this. I know y'all probably had a time, hopefully, to review the information. But just at the end of the meeting, we insert 10.0, if you have extra questions about this, let me know. Oh, good. Kathy, we have a question. And you're muted, Kathy.
Thank you. Is that, am I coming through now? Okay, I just, I just wanted to make a comment. I went through and crunched these numbers comparing attendance growth over the last four years and membership growth along with it. And I want to thank headquarters, because I think they were a part of the reason we had a 27% increase in members that attended, while our membership growth has only been 11%. I think the marketing for this rally was absolutely excellent. So thank you to Lori and your team for that.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. All right, this was just informational topic, so we're going to move on. But again, if you all want to mention this later, you know, if there's time to do this. Lori, do you want anything you want to talk to on your corporate manager report?
I just.
4.3.3.
I just did a brief update since I just gave one a couple of weeks ago. As of yesterday morning, we have 8,924 memberships. We are not slowing down. Since the launch of the Enter Club feature, which was beginning of June, I can tell you we've processed 438 back members, 246 Grapes and Grains, 32 Stella Sisters, 241 indie streamers, 18 Boondockers, and 30 future streamers, which I think is fantastic. Again, part of this goal of having these things online is to bring people together. And, and I think that is helping. I don't know, I know the Enter Club's few of them are a little overwhelmed with the volume, but it'll, I'm sure it will pan out, but it's all great that we're bringing everybody together. I did post the numbers as you see on Freiber. So our final official rig count online, which is ground, which does include some vendors is 935 rigs with a total of 1,754 folks. And for our overall registration, we had 33% cancellation and 10.8% of our overall membership attending the rally. For 2023, as of yesterday, for Rock Springs, we have 577 registrations. The planning team, which includes myself, Christie, Larry Owen, and Debbie Wood, we will be heading to Rock Springs on Saturday to finalize details for next year. For 2024, I believe most of you know the Missouri State Fairgrounds in Sedalia will be our location. They have over 1,000 sites with 50 amp water and sewer. And we're down to trying to choose the dates, which I'd love to have some feedback. So the date the video would prefer us to have is September 28th to October 4th. The average high, I'm putting some weather notes here, although we know the weather these days predictions is probably not reliable. The average high during September to October is 78, low of 55, rain 3.5 inches. Or the secondary date is June 22nd to June 28th with an average of 82, low of 62. We did look on our event calendar, and at this point, I do not see any conflicts currently that are posted for either one of those dates for 2024.
Okay, Lori, it looks like we got some good questions. So it'll be Matt and then Ginger, Greg, and Kathy, and then.
Yep.
So I appreciate knowing this far ahead, the schedule. I was one of the folks who was in Sedalia last time we went in the same timeframe as your secondary schedule. I would encourage us to pick the September date based on the weather.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Ginger, and then Greg.
There we go. I guess if I was going to vote, I want to make sure we're not excluding kids who will be in school by September. I know my granddaughters are thrilled to be going back to, or go with us again next year in Wyoming. So I'm, I would actually want to go for the June date because then the kids who are out of school can, can come. So.
We're just going to, we're just going to keep getting some more comments and kind of see where we get consensus. Okay, Greg, and then Kathy.
Yes. I happen to live an hour away from the Sedalia State Fairgrounds. And that 82 average temperature is completely bogus in today's world. If you look at the last couple of years, you're looking at mid to high 90s with heat indexes in the hundreds. And I would feel very safe in predicting that that's going to be the June temperature in 2024. It's, it's going to be a hot one. Not that that's necessarily bad, and I understand the whole kid thing. But I also think that the temperature has made some of these rallies a little bit challenging. So there, there's a lot of issues to think about, but it, it will be hot. It's a great venue, a very great venue.
Thanks, Greg. Greg, okay, Kathy, and then Pear, and then Karen, and then Ty.
I want to thank Greg for jumping in there. I know climate has changed, but I was raised in Kansas. And when I looked at that average temperature, I thought late June is misery. And I think we had some of that in Maine, so want to avoid that. My second point is, I think by pushing it off, I do understand Ginger's point about kids attending, but we also find it very, very disruptive in Region 10. We have so many rallies that go on through the summer. And if we place an international rally smack dab in the middle of that, then we end up having a lot of people that have to make some hard choices about whether they're going to attend their, their local club rally or the international rally. So I'm, I'm in favor for both of those reasons for the September.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, Pear, Karen, Ty?
I may know secret of the fact that I don't like more weather. And I was thrilled possibility at the time when I participated in looking at the venue and when they offered June and would also consider September, October as an option. I was ecstatic and I was so hoping for motion number one to pass. I have children. They're grown up now. They've been with us to many international rallies. But I think as much as we want to bring in kids to the international rally, it's good to have an option to also, from time to time, have it at locations that have now been deemed less interesting to a lot of our members because they're just too. So I don't think it means that from this point on, everything will be outside of Wally's birthday week. But at least now, you know, I'm favor, a big fan of us doing something like this in September, October. I think it'd be a great alternative. That's my.
Thanks, Pear. Karen, Ty, and then board member.
Yes, I appreciate Lori that you went out and looked at the events, but I know that a lot of people probably haven't even figured out what they're doing in 23, let alone in 24. I think we need to also look at traditional dates. These dates will fall right on top of the Swiss Festival Rally, which is a national rally. I know most regions have their region rallies about the same time. Region 4 rally, because that's the one I'm most familiar with, is always like the third week in May. So I think we, we need to create that list of traditional dates and compare it when we start pulling international dates, rally dates. Second of all, by planning out this far, and this is kind of to Kathy's comment, if we have those dates in advance, I think the local clubs will be able to do a better job of planning their local stuff around those dates so that people don't have to make those hard choices.
Thanks, Karen. Ty, and then whoever's board member.
I'm going to recommend the June dates because of the kids. Basically, we're trying to improve our kids' relationship at these rallies, and we did a pretty good job this year at it. But in the same sense, when you get into September and October, that's where their little league footballs are going on, plus the NFL footballs are going on. We may lose membership attendance by moving it out that late. And also the National Columbus Day Weekend Rally would not be able to be attended by a lot of people that usually come to that if they go to international, but I'm looking at the June date as what I would prefer.
Okay, so thanks, Ty. So who's the person labeled board member? Please identify. With hand up. In a video. Okay, you're muted.
There they are.
Eric, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm driving and we're in New Jersey and trying to fight traffic. I just have to be put in present for the meeting and we're listening, but I'm not being participate too much.
Okay, I didn't get who it was, by the way. I, my audio is kind of bad.
It's Larry Madden from Region Six.
Oh, Larry. Awesome. Thank you. Um, Laura, Barbara, Lori, can you guys change Larry's? Oh, there you go. Thanks, Larry. Did you have any input on the, on the, the date for Sedalia, by the way?
Yeah, we've, we've been to seven rallies, international rallies now, and they've all been hot. September is a good time for me and I understand the family issue, but you know, for a weekend or three or four days, some families can get their kids out of school anyway, but we got to find cooler weather, more enjoyable, I think, to get more participation than the international rally.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Millie, your thoughts?
Yes, thank you. I also agree with the September dates, not only for the temperature, but if historically we've always done these rallies while his birthday week or in that region, we really have a big unknown of who would show up for September. Is it folks who are maybe always busy on a caravan or with another local rally in June and would love to show up in September? Maybe part of a future survey could be looking at dates, that sort of thing. Of course, Per and I can work on that with the long range planning. But I think it's really smart to at least test it out. Let's go for one in September, give people a chance to plan around it. Like Ty said, sometimes people can get the kids out of school depending on sports, that sort of thing. I'm all for it.
Thanks, Millie. Terry?
I agree with the September date as well. I think with climate change, it's not going to get cooler in Sedalia. And I, although I agree with including our children, I think that we should have at least alternating dates when children can attend and when it's cooler. That's just my, my opinion. Thank you.
This is great. So anyone else who wants to weigh in, I see you, John, but I'd love to hear the perspective of all the region presidents. This is a group decision for us and it impacts a lot of things. So I see John and then I see Nancy.
Thank you. I, looking back at the Dazwell situation, for instance, where we were all smoldering. I remember having to buy, going to Walmart and buy window fans so I could actually put fans on the stage so that the IBT and the band and everybody could be somewhat cooler. And then I think it was a determinant to the Lebanon rally. We had a decline in participation at Lebanon because it was again in a hot zone in the same month or basically the same time period. So I think the September date is ideal and we can work around that for all the reasons that have been mentioned. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. So Nancy and then Christine?
I have just a quick comment. I know that in Texas, it's just as hot in September as it is in July. And I don't know about Missouri, but the later in September, otherwise you defeat the whole purpose. It's pretty hot in September. So just my two cents.
Thanks, thanks, Nancy. All right, Christine and then Karen.
Um, I just, I despise the heat. So I am more than willing to go whatever we think will be the cooler choice. I think like Millie said, we don't know how this would work for a September date, so maybe this is the time to try it. And just pray that maybe it'll also be cooler.
Okay, so before I reach out to Karen, I want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak once. Anyone else want to give their thoughts? So let's go to Vern and then, and then Rick and then we'll see where we go after that.
Um, you know, region 12, in fact, it's in our policy that we have our region rally in October every year. And this year, but we do have a provision in there that if we are changing the date to a different month, our executive board can, can meet and, and make that decision, which is what we're actually doing this year. We're, we're having our rally in September. And what's beautiful about the, the September, October months is exactly that weather. California is hot. And there is no way we would get unless we had, you know, full hookups and every building was, you know, we, we wouldn't hold outside events. We, we have to, we have to do something in those cooler months. So I'm all for September or October, just changing it up. We may, we may attract more people again because sitting in a hot trailer is just not something I want to do. So, and maybe I'm just getting old or encrochity, but anyway, it's, it's, I, I despise the heat. I don't want to have to worry about my dog and, or, or power running out. So yeah, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay, then Rick and Bard and then I think Darlene or maybe Lori, I'm not sure.
All right. Thanks, Eric, for the opportunity to say something. Actually, I've been here for over 30 years, live in this great state of Missouri. One of the best times in Missouri is the fall, in my opinion. And I think the participation would be great. The other fact that we have full hookups with 50 amps, so if it is on the warm side, we'll have plenty of power to run those AC units. So I think it'd be great. And the fact that region eight will be involved, I think it'd be a great time of the year.
Thanks much, Rick. Okay, Bard, and I see Lori, your hands up, but I'm going to ask if you want to wait for Darlene and Brad. So Bard, you next.
Okay, I also would like to see something in September. I think that's beneficial for the club. It's, it's real hot. I'm one of those in vintage and I do not have air conditioning here and it was hot in Fryburg. And I would think it would be even hotter if it was in a southern, more southern climate such as Missouri. I also think it's also gives an opportunity to get more vintage potentially because of so many have older, older trailers. And it also allows for many other venues that are in the southern states in Texas, Florida, and some of those that have never really had an opportunity to have international. So for all those considerations, I'm much in favor of trying, trying something at least in the September, October range. Thank you.
Thanks, Bart. Laura, thanks, Bart. Laura, I must go over you because you've spoken once. I'm going to go to Darlene and then Brad and then back to Karen and then Lori.
Good morning, everyone. My only, I like September. I agree with the, the cooler temperatures could always come, I guess, to Alberta in September. That would be much cooler, but seriously, the only issue I have with the date is I believe it conflicts with the balloon festival rally, which is very popular. And I don't believe that they're able to change the dates. I might be wrong there, but that would be my only concern with that particular date is would it conflict with existing rallies which cannot change? I think the Galaxy Festival, I'm not sure of the date, but I know the Balloon Festival for sure can't change. And the same with the Sun Valley Jazz Festival, that date is committed because of our venue. So that would be my only concern with that particular date, but I think the fall is a great idea if we could make it work.
Thanks, Darlene. We come back to you, Lori. Can you address the question, start these questions about the conflict? Okay, so Brad and then Matt.
So I'm, I'm piggyback on what Darlene said. I know there's going to be conflicts, no matter what we try to do, but national event rallies are based off events. And Darlene's already mentioned one, Karen mentioned Swiss Festival, which we're tied to a festival that the town makes. So I just again want to be cognizant of these event rallies that they can't move.
Thanks, Brad. Matt?
So a couple of thoughts. One, I'm currently on a caravan that had been basically allowed to run with members attending the international rally under the old rules. And I will remind everyone that we used to do an east-west schedule that accommodated all the long caravans. I am not suggesting we should avoid conflict because we have very few people who can go to the special rallies, very few people who can go on the caravans. They both have wait lists. You're not going to discourage those. And I would also like to point out, if we're worried about the date, we have every ability to do a national event during the summer where we try to attract kids and families and do an entire agenda aiming toward our future streamers.
Interesting. Thanks, Matt. Okay, I think we're going to finish with Karen and then Lori.
Yes, Eric, I was thinking this might be a good opportunity to use the discussion feature. We'll post something up there about the two possible dates for the 2024 rally. And then let everybody comment back. Same, I know a lot of it will be the same as what we have here, but then we'll have a written record and those that haven't had an opportunity to comment can think about it and add their comments if they choose.
Okay, Lori, your thoughts?
Just a couple of notes as I've been listening to everybody. So moving, I agree with those that are stating moving the rally out of June or July when we did a survey last year with our entire membership. That was a high priority in their world is to get it out of those months. So I think as hard as we try not to have a conflict, you know, June, June, July has been issues, graduation parties, weddings, things of that nature. We're limited on venues because of that timeframe. So again, as we look outside of traditional dates, we're doing that because that's what the majority of our membership asked for. I'm interested in attending. I, I understand and I hear what everybody's saying about conflicts with national rallies and other events. Again, as we're asking for these dates from these venues, I am trying to, we are trying to look to see if there's other conflicts, we are going to do our best not to conflict with another event, but at some point, I'm sure we will because it's just the nature of the beast. So I appreciate all this feedback. I need to get back with the venue within the week. So Eric, let me know if you want to do a discussion. They're, they're waiting on me before they commit to somebody else. So that's all I have this time.
All right. Thanks, anyone. Any last comments before I recommend a course of action based on what I think the board, board has said? Para?
You'd like a straw poll? I mean, we've had people, I mean, I leave it up to you.
Well, yeah, let me take care of that. Okay, so I, I haven't been taking a poll, but it's clear that the vast majority of the board supports the October timeframe. So we needed to make a decision. So I'm going to ask that, again, this is not need to be voted on frankly, but I want to get the sense of what the board wants to do. That's a whole goal of this, right? This discussion. So let's just raise your hand. All of you in favor of the September, October, raise your hand. I guess I can't do anything. Yeah, virtually. Okay, hold them up there so I can kind of get a sense of. Okay, so let me try one more time. So if you're supportive of September, October, raise your hand. Let me know when everyone's got their hands up and down or wherever. Okay, I think I got the sense of how many people are on that side and how many are interested in the June-ish timeframe. Raise your virtual hands. Let everything clear out. Okay, so we have a clear consensus that we're going to go for October. All right. Thanks, Lori. Appreciate that. Now let's move on to an action item. This is the budget stuff. And again, we had a lot of discussion. I'm really glad that we're having a discussion on budget. I'm so glad that so many of you have taken the time to dig into the numbers. It's one of the things that we've not done in the past before is to dig into the budget numbers. So Matt, I'm handing it off to you. I've got one.
All right. So I believe you've all seen and have had the Budget Committee report for some time. I'm not going to bother reading that, but I would like to cover. In addition to that report, some additional remarks addressing questions received from the region officers. Region officers have been provided this and were given a request to provide written or at least email comments to me so I could gather information. So first topic requested was region officer travel. Trying to make two things work at once and I'm not being very successful, so bear with me. So on the topic of regional officer travel, in 2021, 2022, we expect to close at about 36% of budget for this account. Now, in past years, this account has routinely been well under budget, sometimes at 45%, sometimes at 50. And I would recommend in the future, all regions submit a budget estimate with detail. And I would like to begin that in 23, 24. An accurate forecast for 21, 22 would have freed up approximately $20,000 for budgeted expenses, other budgeted expenses. There's no money in this budget for international officer travel, for example. But that amount would have allowed us to fund it for this year. The region officer travel budget was developed with the same calculational tool. See page 70 in the, in the book for this meeting. That calculational tool provided a starting point for the discussion with the region presidents. Each president was asked to provide details justifying any requested increases to that budget. In each case requested, I worked with those requesting to establish a new budget using the information provided. Those are the numbers highlighted in yellow. And it was for three regions which requested the adjustments. Please note, the values shown on page 70 for 2021 and 22 are not the budgeted amounts as they followed the same process to justify increases. The values for 21, 22 on page 60 are the budgeted amounts for that year. The current policy provides very specific language regarding travel expenses. Several questions have been raised regarding expenses to attend rallies. The rally fees for officers attending are covered. Added expense for spouse or partner to attend and/or participate in the rally are not covered. It's unclear how camping expenses paid separate from a rally fee are addressed, but given the language, I wouldn't interpret it that language to allow that expense. The last two topics requested, one, region funding of officer travel. Some regions fund travel for their officers in addition to the funding provided for the internet, for the region presidents. Our policy covers a region president, although they may allocate a portion of their funds to another region officer. And that was the case when I was a region president, we split attendance by geography to reduce the travel time and cost to the 20 units in our, in our region. And so, for example, we had one who lived in the southern end of the region. They took the units in the south, had sort of the middle ground and another vice president had the northern part of our region. Finally, I had a question about midwinter travel. As you know, the midwinter IBT rally is not being held this year. The decision was made to instead hold a business meeting in Jackson Center. So there is no rally associated with the meetings. The midwinter travel budget on pages 66 and 67 is an existing account. This budget was developed this year to cover the Jackson Center strategy meetings. And then finally, on page 58, funding for a member benefit. I had a question regarding that. It's funded at $10,200 and I will defer questions on that to Eric or Lori. That concludes my additional remarks.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so we, we can have discussion, but when you're ready, Matt, introduce the motion and we'll second it. Well, anyway, it's from a committee, then we'll have discussion. Do you want to have more discussion now or introduce your motion for adoption?
So it would have been common to introduce the motion first, but I will do it in any order you and parliamentarian suggest.
Introduce it now and we'll move forward with voting, discussion and voting.
All right, I move that the WBCCI International Board of Trustees is defined by the WBCCI Constitution, Article Eight, Section Two, ratifies decision by the Executive Council, I'm sorry, the Executive Committee, which it was at that time, to approve the 2022, 2023 budget.
Okay, it's come from a committee.
That should be council, I believe. Should that not? Executive Council?
Yeah, actually, at this point, it should be come to. Yeah, actually, at this point, it should be, come to think of it, so. All right, this does not require a second. It's from a committee. Now entertain discussion.
At the time, the motion was approved, it was approved by the Executive Committee. So in your motion, it still needs to say Executive Committee. It was prior to August first.
Got it. Thank you.
Corrected. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to discussion, discuss merits of the motion, Karen.
Matt, I had mentioned this the other day and I guess I didn't resend it to you for your request. But my question is regarding the increase in the staffing salaries. That is increasing almost seventeen percent. I know in your. Letter, it states that's to add an additional person. We've had six staff members, the last one was approved about eighteen months ago and had been on board. For the last twelve months. Are we proposing taking that up to seven? And what is the purpose of the additional person? I'm not saying our member, our staff don't work hard. I'm just trying to understand. Why we need another staff person.
So the, the majority of that increase was due to increases in salary and the cost of benefits. And for any detail on that, I would defer to Lori.
Yeah, I don't know where anybody thinks we're increasing. The staff members were not, we're going to stick with the six that we have.
So wording on the report was unclear, then I apologize.
Can I, may I continue?
First, I want to see if there's other, I liked to make sure everyone has a chance to ask questions.
This is still on the same topic, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Find my notes. The, the salary budget increased from two hundred and seventy thousand to three hundred and fifteen thousand. That's an increase of forty-five thousand dollars and I'm looking just at salaries. I'm not looking at benefits or anything else. And that's a seventeen percent increase. I can see a three to five percent increase if you're talking about increasing or giving people raises. But seventeen percent is what I'm questioning.
I think where the, Matt, Eric, if you know my knowledge, I think where the confusion is, is where back. Six months ago is when we decided to bring on Amber, the member services rep. Since we are over, over. The increase of new members. So that was discussed and we had leftover funds to cover that. So that's why we didn't have to adjust last year's.
So, so what Lori's saying in essence is we're realizing that the. The seventeen percent is compared with the approved budget last year, not the actual expenditure.
Okay, any other questions or discussions on the budget before we move toward action one way or another? Terry, I see your hand up.
Yes, Matt, my question, if we could just go back for a moment to the region officer travel issue. You mentioned that, what did you say about campground fees? You, you said something about that, but I didn't quite catch it. You said, because I know that it had been twenty dollars a day for campground fees. Are you saying that that would be increased? Or could you clarify, please?
Absolutely. The policy is very clear as written. It's twenty dollars per night in the budget. And the, based on three hundred miles of travel per day. If your actual mileage per day is greater and your number of camping nights is lesser, you're allowed to. Submit expenses and receipts up to the amount in the budget. So, so long as your travel budget didn't exceed the twenty dollars budgeted per night. And the number of miles, three hundred miles per day average for the number of nights, that would be fine. I think we could at a future meeting, since we will be revisiting this topic later. We could decide as a group if we wanted to change that policy.
Thank you. I do think that twenty dollars a night for most camping isn't realistic at this point. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Terry, Kathy, and then Bob.
And, and Matt, just for some clarification, because that was actually my question. I'm at a rally right now. For instance, it's an installation rally where my camping fee was paid pendently. It is considerably more than twenty dollars a night. So if it's part of this installation rally, I can submit it as a separate. I, I'm, am I subject to that twenty dollars a night when I'm sitting here at this rally?
So I don't know how it has been interpreted in the past. I read it to say, since it is within the nature of, it's covered. However, you're still limited by your budgeted amount.
Yes, yeah, I, I get that. I think that was kind of what Terry was asking about too, because we kind of went over that pretty quick. So I understand that now. Thank, and thank you for addressing it.
Lori, is that different than we have interpreted in the past?
Now, you're, you're correct, Matt. So basically, the, the rule of thumb has been, yes, we, we. Estimated twenty dollars a night, but it could cost you more than that, as long as you're still within your budget, your region budget, then. You can be reimbursed for it.
All right, thank you. I see Bob Hoffman next.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Just quick clarification on this. So as a new VP coming in. This has been a topic of conversation among Region Three with confusion. So it might be helpful. Not at this session, but for another session where this can all be explained in detail. If we have such a low percentage of regions using this travel benefit, it could be because of. People aren't clear of what they can expense, what they can do, what they can't do. Can VPs use it? Can only the president use it? Things like that. I think it might be helpful if we could get some clarification. I know it's written in the policy, but. Actual interpretation from those that use it on a regular basis might be helpful.
So this might be a great topic for discussion on Board Effect. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you have by email. I'm also very familiar with the Region Three policy. Personally, which provides additional reimbursement to the VPs from region funds.
Perfect. I appreciate that, Matt.
You know, Matt, let's spin up a discussion. I work with Lori on it in Board Effect. I think it'd be a good discussion topic for roundtable board. All right, Karen, and then we'll see where we are in voting on this.
I have another question. This is on. Page fifty-eight of the package that was handed out. It's line. Six, five, four, two, zero, professional accounting. I saw that we budgeted. Sixty-two, fifty, the actual plus the estimate was twelve thousand. I just wondered why the expenses were so high. And then secondly, our new budget's only sixty-five hundred. What's going on there?
So I'll ask Lori to answer that question.
Has to do with some accounting issues, IRS issues with National Caribbean. That our CPAs have been trying to work on with the IRS. That's why we had extended, extended. Our budget on that, as well as where we've restructured how the. Caravan is reported. It's, it's very complex on, we file two different nine-nineties each year. One is under the EIN, the club with all the entities under it, and then the National Caribbean. Actually, we do a separate return for that with the way we had to change our bankings in the year, in the last couple of years. So it's an IRS issue we're working through.
Should some of that be charged back to the caravans? Question, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just, I know they pay us for some of the work that headquarters does. But if we encounter extra fees because of it.
So the caravans are paying an amount. Now, I don't know that we've looked at the balance between the two, but that might be something we want to look at. I've asked John Becker, the caravan's chairman. About instituting a registration fee for caravans. It would be a direct pass through to the, to the club office. To offset costs. And that's something I want to talk to him about again in the future, both as a caravan leader with a very long. Standby list, as well as treasurer with the keen sense that we have a lot of big credit card. Purchase or transactions, and that may be one way to recover that expense.
Okay, thank you all. We're going to see where we are in this budget from our board and move on. So this motion is to adopt the budget for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, requires a majority vote in the affirmative to pass. You guys ready for the question? All right, without objection, this motion as read will be approved. All right, hearing none, this motion is approved. This is the budget for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everyone. We're going to do a better job of this next year also. Not that we did a bad job this year per se. But one of the goals of the strap planning meeting in May, as Per talked about, is to develop some of our high level spending, our cost projections, expenses. In May, and that allows the Budget Standing Committee to take that data and form the budget. And by the way, the Budget Standing Committee is by bylaws and we actually did meet this year. It was me, Karen. Per, Ty, Trevor, Matt, and I may have forgot someone. So we did meet this year. We did have a discussion, the Budget Standing Committee, we prepared this budget. But again, something's gone lost in understanding of it and we'll do a cleaner job next year. So thank you, Matt, for cleaning this up for us. I'm going to offer a break in a second, but John Becker is online. I know he's got other things he probably wants to do. I'm going to ask John, did you do your caravan update? And then we'll take a break after that. Does that work for you?
That works for me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, again, just for the rest of the board, the context is that for new people, we decided that we want to bring in one. Intra-club or special committee function to talk to the board about what we're doing. You know, typically, you know, John would do a report and it would be lightly read typically and no chance to interact with the board. And so John is up for this, this month. I've spoken with VAC and Lynn Talsma is going to be talking to us in November about the status of VAC. So we're going to try to get in a pattern of inviting our major committees and to talk to the board about what's going on, is working, not working. Okay, John, on to you.
Okay, Eric, I sent you just a short presentation, which is almost just talking notes. If you want to put it up, you said.
Let's just start talking through it. I'll see if I can find it.
Okay.
It's, it's actually, it's actually in Board Effect. Sorry, it is in Board Effect, you guys, I believe. It's probably five dot two dot one. Let me just verify that. But you can start talking through it, John.
Okay, I'll start. First thing is, you know, normally I am at either, either present or on Zoom for the IBT meetings. Either at the International Rally or at the Winter IBT, and I do provide a committee report. And so the first month, the first topic I had is, does anybody have any questions from my lightly read report? That I sent in for the IBT that was at the International Rally.
Matt, go ahead.
So John, greetings from Alaska. I just wanted to ask where in the heck you are, because I think you're on caravan.
Just got off the Viking National Caravan. So we were, a day and a half ago, we were on the ferry. So right now, I've pulled over in a Walmart parking lot. So, so that I could dial into the meeting. So that's where I am now, which is, so we're in Maine on the way back home.
Thanks, John. Okay, so why don't you talk through, it is, it is in Board Effect, this page seventy-three, seven-three. But also topic, as I mentioned, five dot two dot one. All right, John, back to you.
If there are, if there's no, if there are no questions from the report that I provided. For the IBT meetings at the International Rally, I'll go one. I picked four topics because I often get questions about them from. Various people, not just members of the IBT or the region, or the region vice presidents. The first one being short caravans. Several years ago, you know, we had a lot of members who were still working and as the club began to. Add members who were younger and still working, although we've had an emphasis on short caravans. And right now, we run two short National Caravans. One is called Smidge of the Ridge, which is a shortened version of Taste of the Blue Ridge. So it's about nine days. And then the National Road National Caravan is broken up into three caravans. Each with their own kiddy fee and you can sign up for one, two, or all three of them. We don't really know how much demand exists on National Road this year, because, and I asked both of the caravan leaders. What happened this year on National Road, everybody was retired, but on Smidge, which it's a small group on Smidge of ten or twelve rigs. There was one rig where somebody was still working full-time and another rig with children where they work remote. So at least for them, it has worked. And we also have Roy Beavers on his way to International was going to scout. A short caravan going up the Natchez Trace, which is from the National Park District. You know, starting in Natures, but Natchez, but there's things to see in Vicksburg as well as you get to finish in Nashville for some music and things along the way. So we are doing that and it's just, it's something that I occasionally get asked of by members. Of the IBT or the extended IBT with region presidents. So if anybody else has any thoughts on this, let me know. We are trying to provide them. As an option to the longer caravans, like the one Matt is leading, as well as the one I just got off of. Okay, if, if no other questions, I want to move on to third-party caravans. I also discussed this in my report. Which is, I did extensive debriefing from people who were on the third-party caravans to Mexico. And while some of them had a good experience, a large number of club members had. At best, you could describe it as a miserable experience. Per and I have been working on a draft club policy for this. And I've sent the draft around to a number of experienced and interested caravan leaders. Peter Schwartz, who leads Alaska on alternate years with Matt. He's investigating a European option where members from North America could fly over. You'd be provided not with Airstreams, but with some other brand. And, and, and have an extensive for, it's twenty-eight or thirty days. Traveling around Europe. And so Peter is investigating that. When he's back, what I plan on doing is. You know, getting his thoughts about that European option and revisiting the draft policy and then bringing it to the board. The one thing I would say for those of you who are interested in going to Europe, it's quite expensive because the vehicles are expensive. And, and everything else, the fuel and everything else going around Europe is expensive, but that's the other option we are looking at. We will still have club members who are going as individuals going to Mexico last year. And I know that Paul Wheeler and Janet Sosie, who are National Caravan leaders who were on the Baja Caravan this year. Which was a very good thing. They were just on the caravan with me up in Newfoundland. And it was lucky that they were. I know they're just going to go as independents and in, in case anybody asks, I have made it very clear to them. That we don't have an affiliation with Caravanas to Mexico, that if people want to go, they are free to go as individuals. If they want to go together as club members, they're free to go with Caravanas to Mexico. They're free to go with Fantasy RV Tours. And they're also free to go with Baja Amigos, which is a Canadian company that runs caravans there. But in any of their communications, because there is some communication that's up on various social media, they need to make sure that. It's very clear that people are going as individuals, that this is not endorsed by the club. Any other questions about? Third-party or contractor, we used to call them contractor caravans. I think now we'll call them the third-party caravans. But I, I think it is something that, as I have talked with Per, we've wanted to try to make some more adventurous. And farther afield options available to members. We just need to do it right. And as I said in my report to the board for Mexico, I need to work with people to find ideally. An experienced caravan leader who is fluent in Spanish to properly scout the route and then lead it. As a national caravan, which is something we did at least once many years ago.
Thanks, Todd. Hang on a second. Lori, your hand was up. Was that inadvertent or do you have a comment, a question?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you, John, for you and your team starting to look at those third parties. We've had several inquiries and the office of one, will we ever be. Sponsoring doing a, a, a club caravan into Mexico and why we, why we don't endorse them. And, and of course, I've been kind of general, but so I appreciate your team looking into that. I definitely think there's an interest within our club to, to do that care, do those caravans. So thank you.
Yes, and I also think. You know, setting, setting proper expectations is critically important. you know, setting setting proper expectations is critically important. You know, I saw some things up in Newfoundland that I haven't seen before on my search protector, like low frequency, which is not the fault of the campground, but it's the fault of the grid. And when you're down in Mexico, they had similar issues with with electrical power when it was warm, etc. So people also, you have to have the proper expectation set. And and that's true for any of these caravans that go in remote areas and members need to be prepared for them. And I would say after Newfoundland that you better make sure you know how to change a spare tire. And I would say if you have a diesel truck, you ought to know how to drain the water out of your primary fuel filter and be prepared to do that. And and if you're not, you 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 need to learn how to do that before you go to some of these remote locations.
Thanks, John. I have a question from Larry.
Yeah.
Hey, in in regard to the third third members doing the caravans, Airstream Inc. recently sent out a questionnaire asking folks if they'd be interested in a caravan that would pay X amount of dollars a day. And is Airstream Inc. in that loop for the third member of caravans?
I I haven't seen what they sent out. If you have that, or if Lori can point me towards it, I'd like to see it.
Okay, John. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'll just, I'll try to find my email. I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you could forward it to the rest of the IBT, when you guys get that, that, we all appreciate that. Okay, back to you, John.
Okay, the next topic I had was banking. I think at times, banking's been the bane of my existence. Historically, caravan leaders would use a separate but personal bank account to operate a caravan. This isn't a good practice. It can lead to a lot of problems. The bank account can end up in somebody's estate, which has happened. And and we really have no access to the funds. And so the approach we've been doing is working with Lori and her team is whenever we can, we transition a caravan to an account at US Bank, and that is for the United States caravan. So as slowly as the caravan leaders have turned over, we continue to move them to US Bank. One of the challenges we had is we didn't have a solution for Canada. And and Lori's given me a lot of 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 coaching and advice. But what we did this year is through Scotiabank, working a lot with the Ontario Club and really John Flynn, who's the treasurer at the club, has been hugely helpful, as well as Pat Leggett, who's the caravan leader for Viking Trail. We found a special kind of a nonprofit banking solution that Scotiabank offered. Also, the Ontario Club is gonna use it for the Maritimes Club Caravan, which is starting either today or started yesterday. And it seems to be a good model. I have a new leader who's gonna do the Canadian Rockies National Caravan, and they're gonna get this same type of account. So I just wanted people to know that whenever we establish a new account, we want to establish it as a nonprofit account. And we had multiple signers for the Viking Trail account, which was a very good thing, because Pat had a medical issue, so issue. So she couldn't be the leader, but John Flynn was a co-signer on the account. And as the caravan traveled through Canada, he was able to write the checks. So this has been something that, over time, I it it started to get cleaned up when Jay Thompson was in my role, and I've just continued to do it. With and thanks very much for all the help from Lori and her team, as well as the Ontario Club has been extremely helpful. And because in a way, they're kind of sponsoring the accounts, they're co-signers on the accounts. And we're gonna do the same thing now with Canadian Rockies. It may be a different bank, because they may want a bank that has a large presence in the West. We chose Scotia because of their presence in Eastern Canada. Any questions on that?
I see Matt. Go ahead.
Yeah, John, I I have a vested interest in this Canadian bank account problem. I haven't found a way for a US citizen to have a Canadian funds account in Canada. And as a result, some of us have to carry large amounts of currency, reportable amounts of currency across borders. And that is an uncomfortable situation. So I was curious if this third-party, or I'm sorry, if this Canadian banking solution could be applied there if we don't have a Canadian resident as one of our leaders or bank account holders.
So, John, hold tight. We have another hand up. So so we'll get to that, Matt. I want to gather thoughts. So Darlene, and then we'll let John respond.
I was just gonna mention to John, Scotiabank is national. So we use Scotiabank in the West also. So I think Scotia would be a good bank to look at for national or Canadian caravans and Canadian accounts. I think it worked, John. Good plan.
Good.
Okay, John, maybe you can address Matt's question.
I don't the, we ended up, when Pat Leggett had to withdraw Matt from being a caravan leader, we ended up with two United States citizens and and their spouses who were leading. And they weren't signers on the account and John Flynn was. So I don't think, I I I will double check for you, Matt, but I don't think the United States citizens who were leaders were signers on the account. And that was, we were, we just happened to be lucky that one of the key things we wanted on this account is to have multiple signers. But they they were not, but whether or not they could be, I don't know. And so I'll find out, Matt, and get back with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, so leaders in capacity and then how you can help.
Yeah. Okay. One of our objectives is we want to have co-leaders for national caravans. And in most cases, we do. It shares the workload, because it's a lot of work, and it also provides backup. You know, on my first national caravan at Southwest, half of the leadership team had to leave due to a medical reason. And as I just discussed on the Viking Trail Caravan, one of the leaders before the caravan started had to drop out because of a medical reason. And we're really limited by how many volunteers we have and our ability to train them. And I I prefer the in-person training and we run it almost at every international rally, but also run it at region rallies. And actually, I think in Texas, one of the clubs ran leader training as well. We have the ability to do it remotely on Zoom. I don't think it works quite as well, but we can do it. And so I would just ask, it was interesting that when I, on the caravan, when I talked to some of the participants, they said they didn't think it was generally known that we're always looking for leaders. So for all of you who are in the region positions, especially, I I want it to be known by you that we're always looking for leaders. And when I get to my next page on some help, that that's something that you all can help me with. In terms of how you can help, if at the region level, you don't have a caravan chair, I used to be caravan chair for Region Three, and I'm not sure if I've been replaced. I'm I'm happy to work with region caravan chairs on short caravans, which which can really be done easily. I led two local club caravans that were short one-week caravans before I started leading national caravans. So that's another way to provide local caravans to, you know, short caravans to members who are still working. And ideally, they shouldn't have to travel very far to those. I would say when you're having a region event, let me know and we can discuss whether or not an in-person training is desirable. In Region Eleven, at their rally back in March, I offered to do an in-person training. There wasn't enough, there weren't enough people who were interested. So we actually took the one or two people who were interested, and we're gonna do them with a Zoom session later. So I would say from that standpoint, you know, whatever you can do, when when you're thinking of a region rally or some kind of event in your area, please reach out to me. Because if it's not me, Ray Combs is on the East Coast, and he's on the caravan committee, and he heads up my training effort. He can do it, or or I can do it if it's out in the West. And I would also say, if you see people, you know, I've recruited a co-leader for Southwest Adventure for two years from now, from the caravan that I was just on. So if you're at events and you think somebody would be capable of leading a national caravan, I I hope that Matt, while he's on Alaska, is doing the same. And I keep telling the caravan leaders, they need to be constantly thinking about their own succession plan. Because caravan leaders do periodically want to take a break if they've led a caravan. For Southwest Adventure, I'll be leading next year along with three other people and the current leaders, you know, they, they're not gonna do, they're not going to cease contributing to the club, but they want to take a break after leading caravans for several years in a row. So that's how you can help me. And then finally, I know Jay met with, and he, I have a long list of ideas that were discussed at the International Rally. For a lot of these, I'm gonna need some assistance from Jackson Center. They have to do with continuing to automate. Matt Matt mentioned the twenty-five dollar registration fee, but one of the other ideas was people go online to pay with a credit card directly for the International Rally. Can we, could, can we, should we do that for national caravans? I'm sure we can. It can get, but we really need for that, that will become a real project, because if we're running, this year, we were gonna run twenty-four national caravans. That means if Canada is in scope, that there's twenty-four bank accounts that are targeted for the money and keeping track of which participant has paid and how much is is a big task. And so those kind of things can be done. And so I will be getting back after I get home and contact, because I know Lori also had some discussions with Jay about, we do make payments to Jackson Center for services that are rendered. For most of the caravans that are expensive, that amount is sixty-five dollars per paying rig with a cap of about twenty-five thousand dollars. So I think if it was Karen who asked that question about the accounting fees and some of that was caused by accounting for national caravans, we do pay twenty, up to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Now that we're running a full slate of caravans, we should hit that limit for service that are, services that are rendered to Jackson Center. So unless people have additional questions, I'm happy to field any questions that people may have. And I look, I do look forward, I will be at the International Rally in Wyoming. I'm signed up. So I, it certainly, at the latest, I would see all of you face to face, at least in June.
Thanks, John. I see a hand up from Carrie.
Good morning, John. Good to see you. So I have a quick question about distinguishing short caravans, like the one that you described on Natchez Trace, from region caravans. So can you help me understand that a little better, please?
Yes. If it's going to be a numbered caravan, it has to meet certain requirements, like using the kitty fee member, kitty fee method, a minimum number of stops, a minimum number of nights, etc. And that's in the caravan handbook. The only difference between a numbered club, a numbered region, or a national caravan is who is the sponsor. And so there are a number of clubs that have a numbered caravan when they go to an international rally. And that means that local club is the sponsor and and the executive committee would approve it. If it's a region caravan, then it's the region executive committee that would approve it. And if it's a national caravan, it's my approval of all the documents they submit, the caravan data sheet, etc. For it to be a numbered national caravan. But often, a a, when, when I was a co-leader on a local club caravan, we didn't use the kitty fee method. We managed it more like a rally. We didn't go to the trouble of getting a number. And they'd be seven to nine days, but I did have them approved by the Piedmont Airstream Club Executive Committee. And so you don't have to go to the, running a kitty fee is a lot of work. And often I advise people, you know, if you want to run a local club caravan, that's a short caravan, then you're you're free to do it. You don't have to do it, you know, with with all of the requirements of a national caravan in terms of having a kitty fee and the minimum number of days, etc. But it ought to be approved by the appropriate body, be it a regional, region executive council or the executive committee of a local club.
So the duration and the duration and distance may be the same, but it's who you get to approve it. And whether you follow the numbered caravan guidelines is is the distinguishing feature?
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. I see Kathy.
Yes, hey, John, this will keep you from answering an email I sent to you. The, one of my clubs is putting together a number of caravans to come to Wyoming. There's great interest in it. And it's not going to be numbered caravans, but I would like to have some kind of training for the leaders, though potentially be eight different leaders. How do I set that up?
I'll answer you in your email, but given it, if we don't have an opportunity to do it in person, then Ray Combs and I can run a Zoom training session. We can do it the same as we would for people who are running national caravans. All the advice would still apply. The other big resource they can have is the caravan handbook with all of the supporting documents are, you have to be logged in as a member, but they're on the club website. And that's a really good place to start, because that document, it was a huge effort to rewrite the document that was led by Matt Hackney, probably a bigger effort than he thought it was going to be. And a large number of experienced caravan leaders contributed. So all the best thoughts and and how and all the, all the things about how to run a caravan are in there. They wouldn't all necessarily apply like the budgeting and kitty fee, but it's still not a bad idea to look at it. And all the supporting documents are there with hyperlinks and easy to get to. So that's a good place for them to start, is to read that. And I get questions from local club members about that when they read that, and I'm happy to answer them.
And and where do I find that on the website? I have a hard time navigating that.
It's, well, I'm gonna make Eric laugh. The only person who knows where to find stuff on a, on a website in the hierarchy is the person who designed the hierarchy, because everything makes sense to them. It's in the member resources section, and I can send you a link to it when I see your email. It may take a few days for me to get home.
No rush. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, John. Okay, you need the question before we let John go and go to break. Thanks, John. And again, I hope that, thank you for spending time with us from Walmart. I appreciate that. Hope it's not getting too hot in the trailer. So thanks much. With that, we're gonna take a bit of a break. Well, I'm gonna suggest we take fifteen minutes, so we'll be back at twenty after the hour. All right? And then we don't have that much more to cover. So I'm hoping we'll be out of here before the next hour. All right, come back in twenty minutes, or sorry, fifteen minutes, twenty after the hour.
Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity, Eric. And Nancy says bye as well.
Bye, Nancy. All right, see you guys at twenty after. Okay, we're gonna start in about a minute. So Terry, just to be a favor, as people, as we've joined again, just compare your notes against who's on screen to make sure that we have retained core. And haven't lost people during the break. Okay?
I certainly will. Thank you.
I can see that we have three people showing up and participants as. Board member. It'd be nice if you could change your name to reflect your actual name.
Perry, you may explain to them how to do that. Go to the three dots, click on it and go rename and they can put their name in.
What John says.
Okay, if you have any trouble, just to reach out to Lori and tell her and she can change it. She or I. Okay, we're gonna reconvene now 20 minutes after the hour. We're gonna move into. Five dot three communication bylaws committee. So Tom, on to you.
And we do have a quorum.
Awesome. Thanks, Terry. Ah, but do we have Tom? I guess that's the question. Tom, are you with us? Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so. If I have this correct, I'm supposed to present the two motions. Which were discussed at the last forum meeting.
Agreed. Motion five dot three dot one and five dot three dot two. Yeah, so go ahead.
Okay. To expedite, to expedite things. Do you want me to read the entire motion?
You could use your best judgment on this one, but probably not. Joanne, I think we're having trouble losing Tom again, or maybe you lost me. Who knows?
For the course of two and a half hours, there was absolutely no problem with this connection, but now it's a little bad. Read the motion. I move WBCCI policy 8.6. International Board of Trustees. From Article 8 bylaws deleted entirely, a new policy 8.6.1 be inserted.
Tom, this is not going to work. You're gonna have to get to a better area. So I'm gonna. Skip over you. We'll give you about 15 minutes to come back together again. I would encourage you to join by voice only if that helps the connectivity. So we're gonna pass over that five dot three. We're gonna go to seven dot one light interclub structure proposal motion. Millie?
Okay. I'm trying to read from this. I move that the WBCCI International Board of Trustees amend. The WBCCI policy to allow for establishment of focus groups of common member interests to be called interest clubs or interest groups. We had amended and added some. Policy to the original memo, but having spoken to Tom and and. Taken advice from Tom and Joanne this morning, the policy portion of it can wait. It's basically a matter of getting the board to approve. The principle or the idea that we form interest groups as is stated in the original motion where folks who want to fly fish together or bird watch together. That sort of thing. Can be a little more enabled to do so under the umbrella of the club. Does that make sense?
It does. So please reread your motion and then we'll ask for a second and then we'll see if we have discussion. Alright, so please reread your motion, Millie.
How much of this do you want me to read? The summary?
The most the motion part. I moved that.
Okay, I did that. I move that WBCCI National Board of Trustees. Amend the WBCCI policy to allow for the establishment of focus groups of common member interests to be called interest clubs. Do you need purpose and background?
That's good enough for now. So do we have a second on that motion? Okay, Matt, are you signaling a second?
I am, so was Karen.
I think Karen waved off the second, but I'm not sure, but. Karen, can you clarify? Because your hand was up first. Are you seconding or you got a question?
I was going.
I'll second the motion.
And I have a question.
Okay, so seconded by by Karen. All right, just so Millie, please read your purpose, impact, background and financial impact statement.
Okay, the purpose is interest clubs allow WBCCI members to share lifestyle interests and gather together. But without the stricter, more regimented rules and regulations of the that the intra-clubs must follow. You want the background?
Yes, please, all of it.
Members have shown much interest in forming groups similar to intra-clubs, but without elections, officers dues and complete. Constitutional bylaws, et cetera. By enabling this system. Of WBCCI members can form an interest club and choose to have a group leader. Or leaders. They may gather for rallies, outings or casual get togethers. Listing such groups. On the club website will allow members of similar interest to find each other easily. Our club has experienced increased enthusiasm to form intra-clubs. However, many groups are put off by the bylaw and constitution requirements. The ability to form a group of members who share a passion such as fishing, birding, painting, et cetera. Will add value to their membership and encourage broader participation by members. Eliminating the need for dues and officers enables a group to gather more casually and the financial impact is none.
Thanks, Billy. Okay, now do we have any questions or discussion concerning the motion? From the border or the board or attendees? Karen, your hands up first. And then Joanne.
Yes, as I understood. Millie is kind of her introduction to the motion. The attachments, the current policy and proposed policy are going to not be part of this motion at this time. The motion is basically to us to approve the concept. And we'll come back with the actual policy changes later.
Correct. With Tom and Joanne both on caravans. There's a lot of back and forth and trying to reach out to them. It would make sense at a later time if we sit down together, hash out the policy changes. To simplify it and get it accepted. That way we can bring it back before the border before the EC to have that approved.
Okay, let's continue comments and then it's a little bit unorthodox. As you guys know from Tom's motions. There also may need to be some language changes from his. And so that's why it might make sense to bring the. Official language back through electronic vote or something, but let's keep going. Other discussion, see where the board sits on it. So I got Joanne and Ty and Larry.
I just wanted to make it clear that you are only voting on the. Concept. All the rest of the information that was attached to that motion regarding policy changes, please disregard all of that. So.
Correct. It's just on the motion that Millie read, which is just the first part.
Correct.
Thank you. Ty and then Larry.
Okay. Hold on a minute here. Okay. With the word interest and intra-clubs, are we getting too close on wording for people to know the difference? Do we need to change that to something else before we move forward with this?
I don't, I don't, I don't personally think so, Ty. I think the the whole idea of interest groups, we could maybe call it interest groups rather than interest clubs. I think it just kind of emphasizes that it's whatever people are interested in. So I like that word. Just me.
Thanks, Ty. And as we get feedback from the rest of the board, toss in your thoughts as well, because this is a discussion, of course, under the discussion period. Larry and then Matt, please.
Hey, I just think it's a great idea to kind of relieve the burdensome regulations that go along with being a club as stated in the motion. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Matt and John?
So as someone who's spent a considerable amount of time with our constitution, our bylaws and our policies, I would second the suggestion that it become interest groups and not clubs. The word club is throughout our policies and our bylaws and changing it to group would be a very smart move.
Agreed.
Thanks, Matt. We get to comment and discussion. There's opportunity for a friendly amendment. This could fall in that category, but let's get some more comment from the board on the material part of the motion. So John, what are your thoughts?
Well, I agree with what Matt just said. Renaming it would make a lot of sense not to conflict. I'm maybe often far left field. I'm thinking that interest groups is similar to indie streamers, VAC, whatever. It's a shame that we can't all have interest groups rather than intra-clubs. I know the the problems we went through to put together the bureaucracy we went through to form the intra-club indie streamers, for instance. And I'm just saying, why can't they all be interest groups?
Thanks, Sean. Christine?
Um, I would like to say that I also agree with the wording, calling it interest groups. I think it does make it a little bit more clear. I must say that I also have had the same thought as John Holly. Not that that helps the discussion per se, but I do think that we've, we've, we're offering a lot and I'm just wondering if it makes more sense to tighten it up.
Christine, can you expand on that? I think I, I for certain would like to hear more about the background of your thoughts. Just to say it again, I'm not sure I've fully followed.
Well, I think it, I'll, I'll talk about it a little bit more, Eric, when we talk about the new inter-club. My concern with, you know, how we continually are adding more and more. I have feelings, good and bad, and I'd like to hear other people's feelings, good and bad. Interest groups I like because I think it would be nice for rallies in terms of region rallies to be able to reach out to an interest group and say, hey, would you consider offering an activity based on your interest group at the region rally? And then promote it. So, but I definitely like the word group more than club. I think it keeps it clearer.
Thanks. That's helpful. Thanks, Christine. Karen?
I want to point out to John and to everyone that the biggest difference between intra-clubs and interest groups, if we go with that name, is that intra-clubs can have a treasury, collect dues, all of that stuff. Interest groups cannot, and that's why they have fewer regulations than the intra-clubs. So there is a defined difference between the two.
Thanks, Karen. Any other? Okay, I see Pear. Your hand up?
Yeah, there's this whole idea of having one for everything. That's kind of how Escape Beast does it, not saying that we should follow the same model. And if I recall correctly, the vast majority of their birds of a feather are as lightly structured as our proposed interest groups are. But they have something like three or four of them that are equivalent to our intra-clubs. So they have kind of a path forward. And to me, it's fine to have intra-clubs as they are, but just offer a wider range of topics that people can sign up for in a lighter form like an interest group. So I think it's fine to keep the terms different and then also have a path forward for those to become more serious when it comes to money and stuff like that. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Okay, so did I discern then a sort of a friendly motion to Millie to change it to interest groups? Is that what I'm hearing? Or did I not hear that?
Yes. And and full, full disclosure, when we originally wrote this motion, we used the word interest clubs, then changed it to interest groups. And I think I had a faux pas. That's why I know, Eric, it was looking familiar to you. I had a faux pas and when I had to rewrite one of the motions, I picked up my old draft and didn't notice. So it is supposed to be interest groups.
Good, good.
Alrighty, other discussions of this before we move it to a vote for the board. Alright, at least if I get this right then. Okay, this is a policy amendment and requires a majority vote to pass. The motion proposes amending WBCCI policy to allow for the establishment of focus groups to be called interest groups. I think just for clarity for everyone, Millie, can you just reread the amended motion, please? The I move that
Hang on, I'm getting there. I gotta get back up to it. I move that WBCCI bylaws article, nope, wait, wait. My phone moved to the wrong space here. Okay. I move that WBCCI International Board of Trustees amend WBCCI policy to allow for the establishment of focus groups of common member interests to be called interest groups.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Millie. Alright, are we ready for the question? Okay, so the vote is on the motion. Anyway, we just talked about seven dot one dot one. Without objection, a motion under seven dot one dot one will be approved as amended and just read. Alright, see no objection. It's approved. Alright, thank you, Millie. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tom and Joanne. They went through a ton of work to try to work on this and you know, as we've all talked about this, really a little bit of job working out our processes and getting things approved ahead of time. It's much easier for everyone if we get that. We had a bit of a glitch that time and I apologize for that. Okay, Tom, are you back on to a stable connection now?
No, I don't see him yet, Eric. I've texted him a phone number to call, so I'm just waiting to hear back.
Okay, let's move to seven dot two dot one. This is a discussion. Pear, if you could introduce that one, please.
Yeah, so I'd like to put up a slide if I may.
Yeah.
Alright, so let me share my screen. Hang on. Um, I shared my screen. Alright, there we go. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Alright, so, so from, from time to time, we make adjustments to our standing committees. A while back, Eric asked me and Karen Fisher to take a more holistic look at all standing committees. And several questions came up as we looked into it. Do we have the right set? Should we retool some of them? Can we retire some of them? How do we liaison between standing committees and the executive committee, especially if motion two passes? I say this, it sounds like it's present tense, but it's actually it's past tense now. Our report included the IBT packet is a starting point for conversation within the IBT. It represents work in progress. It contains ideas on how we can move forward with each committee. It also contains short-term instructions that could be given to chairs of the standing committees. The effort is wrapping up at our second quarter IBT meeting. At that point, we'll present motions to be voted on. Between now and then, we'd like to invite those who are interested in the subject to take part in finalizing any proposed changes. Maybe you have an interest in one committee. Maybe you have an interest in a particular topic such as finance. Maybe you're interested in the bigger thing. We basically have two months before we need to submit any motions. I'll be sending out Zoom invitations to members of the IBT, vice presidents and standing committee chairs. So feel free to send comments via email if you prefer, and we look forward to your participation. With that, I'd like to ask if anyone has any comments from or questions about the report that was presented. Stop sharing and get back to this. This is me.
Alright, thanks, Pear. I don't see any, but I just want to reinforce what Pear said is that, you know, I know the region presidents, regional officers have jobs to do also. You're managing your regions. However, we certainly want your contribution and feedback into this process. So as Pear said, if you have time to help out, even just some of your thoughts, we'd really appreciate it. Alright, I see Terry and I see Matt. I thought I saw Abe, but we'll go Terry and Matt right now.
Yes, Pear, would it be possible for you to send out a list of all the committees so that we can get a better idea of those? And I have one other question, and that relates to Millie's motion, just going back. You mentioned, Eric, it was approved as amended, but she said she meant to put interest groups. So was it really amended?
Okay, so just to be clear, what she said is what we voted on and the only difference was it changed it from clubs to groups.
Okay, that's the amendment. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Alright.
Hang on, she asked a question. Terry did. So I'm gonna answer the question. The question is sending out a list of committees. It's in the report. I have a summary of the committees that we have on record and a summary that explains a proposed path forward for each one. There's a table in the beginning.
Thank you, Pear.
Thanks, Pear. Pear, you also may consider, now that we talked about board impact, of board impact of spinning up a discussion group on this when you form your team. That might be a nice place to archives a day and everyone else could see it. But that leave up to you to decide. Abe, and then Matt.
Yes, I'd just like to say to Pear that I like to participate. I like, I have some, some ideas for that. So just include me on that, please. Thank you.
So, yes, a couple of specific thoughts. First, I think the planning guides change is one that was recognized and recommended about five years ago by the then chairman of planning guides, me. So I appreciate that. Second, I think it's very encouraging that we're going to have liaison with specific names attached to those committees. So those committee chairman become more a part of the team and functional working with our plan going forward instead of simply occasionally fulfilling a role at a meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Alright, I think that's it for questions that I can see. Thanks, Pear. Appreciate it. I'm gonna, I know Tom might be back, but we're gonna do two things in advance. First of all, section eight is something, it's bizarre language, I apologize. It's member comment on non-agenda items. And what that means is that if we have any public people that are watching or any of you want to talk about something that is not on the agenda, now is that time. So are there any discussions or comments from the public, from the board, from members on things that we've talked about so far? And Lori, I probably need your help understanding if something pops up online. Matt?
I think this is an appropriate time. I'm going to mention, because I have to leave, we have tickets to go to a remote island from here in Homer, Alaska. And so I'll be leaving. I wanted to express my support for the remaining motions that have not yet been brought forward, though I won't be able to vote because I won't be a part of the quorum at that point. I wanted to express my agreement with them and I'm done.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for the budget and thanks for stepping out off your, your for caravan. Alright, so we go to new business now, nine dot one. We have a motion.
I'm sorry, Eric, can I interrupt? Tom is on the phone. Do you want to jump back to him while he has connection?
No, not yet. We're gonna do any, we're gonna do nine dot one first. Hopefully that'll go pretty quickly, but we'll see how it goes. Laverne, I understand there's a motion nine dot one Pride Streamers provisional charter. If you could read that motion, please.
Correct, yes. I move that the IBT approve a provisional charter for the Pride Streamers intra-club.
Thanks, Laverne. Do we have a second for that motion? Okay, I see a second from Pear. Alright, Laverne, to give your purpose and background, please.
Okay. The purpose is to begin the process of chartering and launching a new intra-club. The objectives of the Pride Streamers are to connect and support LGBTQ plus club members. Pride members is open to all members of WBCCI and their supporters to organize and conduct events and rallies and to establish an electronic forum for sharing information, fielding questions and coordinating events and rallies.
Thanks, Laverne. Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? Before anyone asks, I do have to just explain why this is on here, too. The executive council has the authority to approve provisional charters. My contention is that just because we have the ability doesn't mean we always should. I thought, think that this particular intra-club like Stella Sisters is something of interest to the whole board, and I wanted to make sure the whole board had a chance to weigh in on their thoughts before we grant a provisional charter, other than just granting it within the EC and letting you know. So that's kind of the reason behind the discussion on this one. It's just for the board to weigh in. Alright, so do we have questions or comments for the board? Wow. Christine, there you are.
Um, this is just a general comment to all about the intra-clubs, just a concern that I have. And it really relates back to our local clubs. I have discussed this with both of my VPs. I'm just, I have a concern that we might be pulling away from our local clubs, some of the energy, the talent, the creativity. Time is of an issue for everyone and I just am, I, I, I just want to make sure that we're not creating so many intra-clubs where that energy might be better focused on our local clubs. It, it could be that this is the way of the future, you know, maybe this is what we're Airstreams going to become, a bunch of intra-clubs versus local clubs. But we've always been a group that has been pretty much all Airstreamers first. And I'm just, you know, we, we've, we just recently approved the Stella Sisters. We're now, you know, approving this one. I just wondered if anyone else has thoughts about this or concerns.
Excellent. Thanks, Christine. Millie?
Thank you. And Christine, I understand your points as the intra-clubs affect the rallies and the gatherings. What I'm seeing, especially with some of the newer groups that we've had, it's enhancing those rallies. I'm seeing more happy hour gatherings and other people being welcomed in. I think if anything, under the umbrella of all the intra-clubs, whether it's Grapes and Grains or LGBTQ, it's making people realize it's an easier way for to, for them to find their little groups within the larger club. As a single woman who started out in this club, you know, tiny, tiny fish in a big sea of all you experienced Airstreamers, this is what I was looking for. Small units of people who I could gather with and I've learned so much from them. And if we can form these intra-clubs and help other people, bring them up with us and help to educate them about the Airstream life and how to, how to get along and and find good groups, I think it's going to be an enhancement to the club and the rallies.
Thanks, Millie. Okay, I get Pear, Laverne, Terry and then Christine.
Yeah, I think, I think of the whole thing as a big matrix where the horizontals are our low, you know, regional representation and the verticals are intra-clubs. And so, you know, you may be living in a particular area that restricts where you can go and your matrix may not cover you all the way out, but people look at the club from different perspectives. One of them is, hey, you know, I live in New England. What's going on in New England? But others may key their way into the club because, oh, you have one of those. Okay, that's my keyword into the organization. And then I discovered after that that there are geographies where the club is operating. So I worry less So I worry less about us crowding out the geographies, you know. People, some people will only drive in a 200 mile radius. That's it. Doesn't matter what's going on in other geographies. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Per. Laverne, did you want to address this now, or did you want to wait to get the rest of the comment from the board?
Um, I don't want to address it. I just want to add my thoughts to this. Is, is that okay?
Let me ask that we let, get the rest of the board to weigh in, and then you can circle back to you as a motion maker.
Okay.
All right, I see Kathy. Sorry, so I see Terry and I see Christine.
I actually have a different view than Christine does about this. I feel, let's take this particular motion, for example. When we have a club that's welcoming to LGBTQ people, and they can see that, then I think they feel more part of the Airstream group. I don't think it dilutes anything. But I know that we have a, a couple in our club that came to a rally who are gay, and they wondered if they would ever be accepted, and they were hesitant to come. But when we have this in writing as part of the formal structure of our club, for example, with this one, this lets them know that, yes, they're not only welcome, but that in writing informal stuff, we respect and welcome them. So I think it doesn't dilute anything. I think it adds. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Christine, I'm gonna skip over you because you spoke once. I'll come back to you. So we'll go to Ty, and then Bob, and then back to you. So Ty.
I think it does add to the club in one way, but I also think it dilutes a little bit because all of a sudden we're getting clubs. They're going to become clickish instead of forcing, I shouldn't say forcing, but instead of having people more open to doing things, we're beginning to allow these clubs to have group gatherings and internationals and stuff. And you don't, you get into a clique and then you forget that there's other things going around you. So I don't know if we're going to continue doing that, if we're just going to allow all these clubs to form and then have little sublets gathering in certain spots and forgetting what else is going on. And then we become a clickish group, and then it's a downfall. But as long as we stay on the positive side, I think, I think it's a great idea. I just don't want to see us becoming clickish in our groups where we're not meeting other people and stuff and doing other.
Well said. Thanks, Ty. Okay, Bob, and then Abe.
Hey, hello, everybody. So I would agree with Terry, and I know when Wayne and I joined, when Wayne and I bought our Airstream, we considered the club, joining the club. And at the time, we were nervous because we didn't know if we would be accepted as a gay couple. We reached out to some other Airstream owners, and they were not part of the club because of the reason, this exact reason. There's, there was nothing in writing. They didn't know if they'd be accepted, and they just didn't want to set themselves up for failure. Thankfully, Wayne and I pushed forward, and we joined the club, and we have had an amazing experience. We've rallied with, with clubs across the eastern side of the country, not knowing anybody at the rallies and have joined and have been welcomed at every single one of them. So I'm totally thankful for that. I'm totally in favor of the intra, intra club. And speaking to Ty's comment about clickish, I would argue with that, that we had the LGBTQ happy hour at international. We had over 150 people there, both LGBTQ members as well as straight allies. It was open to all. It was welcomed by all, and it was participated by all. So it was a great success, and I look forward to much more of that in the future.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Abe, and then Darlene.
Yes, I'd just like to say that, you know, I welcome all clubs, intra and interest clubs. I think it's a great thing for the club. The only thing I would like to see is at the end of the road, when we set all this up, that it doesn't affect attendance to region rallies. I know it won't probably on a local level, but I'd just like to see that it doesn't affect region rallies attendance. That, that would be my, my point of view. Thank you.
Thanks, Abe. Darlene?
My only comment, I think it's a definite necessary issue, point to have. We need to be as inclusive, and our language needs to indicate to people who are not members that we are inclusive. At the local club level, I think it's a no brainer. People who are there who've already joined, it's about the friendship. So that's not an issue. But people who are on the outside looking in, are they going to be accepted? Well, as someone mentioned, if it's pointed out, yes, they will. Maybe not in that particular club, but there will be a club somewhere that they'll be quite happy to join. And I think we need to indicate to the whole world that basically it is inclusive of everyone. So I think it's a good idea.
Thanks, Darlene. Okay, back to you, Christine now.
Um, I just want to make sure that my comments, they're framed from coming off of Galax. And I did, my husband and I ran the rally. It's a lot of work. I, and a happy hour is only a small portion of a rally. So I'm just thinking back to the local clubs where sometimes they may have issues getting presidents, vice presidents, secretaries, treasures, planning the rallies, planning the rallies are a lot of work. That's what I mean by the time, talent, energy, creativity, that I worry that gets siphoned off from a local club as we create more and more intra clubs. That's where I'm coming from. Not who it is and, and who we're welcoming, but it's really the more, I'm, I'm talking about the nuts and bolts of running the club, running a rally. Man, do I understand that after doing Galax, and I can, and I am continuing with Galax, but it's a lot of work. We've got older members. I just want to be cognizant of what they might be facing, and we don't want to lose people that, that we can't replace them with. So that, it's just a comment to bring up, to think about.
Uh, Laverne, did you, I think you're on my list. Did you have anything else you wanted to, to share into this?
Um, just that I feel it's an enhancement. I think it's a slippery slope if we were to determine, well, you know, this, this group is okay, but this group is not. I think that's a, that's a slippery slope. Saying, you know, unless a intra club decides to do a rally just on the exact same dates as a local rally, that, that's fear based, and I'm, I'm hoping that never happens. I can't, I mean, that would be disappointing. But as, as is, you know, we have in region 12, we've had local clubs actually scheduled a rally during region rally week. So I don't think it takes away from the local clubs. I think it enhances.
Okay, so I'm going to bring this to a vote, but I'm going to also offer a longer term discussion. What I heard the board say was that it, there didn't seem to be any concern. In fact, there seemed to be great interest in having LGBTQ plus. But the broader issue is the number of interest clubs, intra clubs that were starting to grow. I think we're acknowledging that we had probably three, five years ago. Now we have quite a few. And this could be something that we choose to discuss at our strategy meeting and talk about. As one of you said, are we turning into a club with a bunch of intra clubs or interest clubs? I would encourage that, however the board votes on this, that we have a discussion as part of the strategic planning in May about sort of where are we going, what limits to be put on or not, what our goals are doing that. The board could also decide to approve or reject this and ask for a moratorium on any new ones until we talk about strategically as well. Those are some of the options that you guys have in front of you. Let me just move this to vote on this one, and then we can see what we do next. All right, this is a policy amendment and requires a majority of the vote to pass, an affirmative to pass. This motion proposes approving, providing provisional charter for new intra club Pride Streamers. Are we ready for the question? All right. The vote is on the motion. Without objection, the motion titled nine dot one dot one moves forward. Without objection. All right, here are no objection. Motion is approved. Thank you, Laverne. So for the rest of the board, just kind of give your thumbs up on, do we want to add this to the strategy planning discussion on sort of how our club is moving? Is there sort of yes on that? Kind of seemed to be. And the other question is that, is the board also would like to suggest that we hold, have a moratorium on approving any new ones until we have that discussion. That's the other. Like I see shaking of the heads and. All right, so we'll just leave those to come up as they come up. All right? Does that make sense? So we're, we approve Pride Streamers. We're going to talk about this in depth in our strategy session, try to put some rules around what we do. But we're not precluding any new ones, and we'll treat those as they come up. Sound good? All right, thanks, Laverne. Thanks to everyone else for, I'm really quite excited, but I guess I could say that now, but I'm personally quite excited about this moving forward, as I was for Stella Sisters as well. Okay, now we're going to loop back around to Mr. Smithson. Tom, are you with us now? We'll go back to five dot three. Oh, no, did we lose Tom again?
Hang on, we're trying, he's, I see his phone. We're trying to get him unmuted. Standby.
I'm getting a little concerned about the length of the meeting. If we can't conclude this, I'm going to suggest we defer it to electronic vote. All right, without a decision on that one just yet, let's, let's go into 10 dot our region business announcements and just anything you guys want to talk about. Let's give it about five or 10 minutes, and then if we're not ready to get Tom, then we'll have to push that out to a later discussion. I would suggest in random, actually, hang on a second. Millie, your hand is up. Do you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, and it's very, very important, and I need everyone to pay very, very close attention. At Freiburg, I found a flagpole, and no one has claimed it yet. I know someone in this region group knows to whom the flagpole belongs. Currently, it is my traveling companion. It's quiet. It doesn't interrupt. It doesn't need to stop for the bathroom. So I'm happy to carry it all the way to Wyoming. However, I know someone misses this kind, caring, and handsome flagpole. When you figure it out, please let me know.
Thank you, Millie. All right, we're going to go through the region stuff, since it doesn't look like we have Tom ready yet. So region one, we'll go numerical order, numerical sort. Any updates or things you want to add into it, region one? Bart, there you are.
Well, hi. Yeah, obviously, we've got, we have Eddie Carl on board here, and he's listening with us today. He's our second VP, and we were very, very excited to have Eddie Carl with us. Eddie will is chairing our region rally coming up in May, May 15th through the 18th. It's flocking to the Cape. It's going to be on Cape Cod in June. I'm sorry, in June. But anyways, we're, we're, we're really excited about having a region rally on Cape Cod. It's a tough place to get a, a location, and, you know, Eddie has done an amazing job in, in developing that. So we're, we like to invite everybody back to New England again, but this time out by the water on Cape Cod. That's it.
Thanks, Bart. Okay, we're going to go in order, so you know who's next. So two, what's up?
Yes, I'm, I'm sitting in right now for RJ, who had meeting conflicts for business. And right now I have nothing to add to the region two calendar or business.
Well, thanks for stepping in, Gary. Appreciate that. All right, region three.
Um. I would just like to give a shout out to our new Blue Beret editor. She's doing a great job, Susan Poole. And she's covering the region events that are happening on a regular basis. I really appreciate her and her writing style and what she's doing.
Thanks, Christine. Region four?
Um, nothing to report. I'm glad that we've had a really easygoing IBT meeting. Thank you very much, Eric.
Well, thanks, all of you. And I, I've told you guys this, Brad's great, and he approached me on something I didn't agree with, and I love it. We had a great discussion, and it was one of the best decisions. I think I had to say, yeah, let's chat. So thanks, Brad, for all your help and leadership on that. Really, thanks, James. Uh, reason five.
Thank you, Eric. Our region five rally will be third week of September next month. We're, we've done as much advertising as we can and personal contact to build attendance, but attendance is down. It was down the past three or four years. We know why some of that happened with the COVID, the pandemic. My goal is to build the attendance moving forward. And I have established a, a three-member committee that will study the feasibility of moving region five's rally from September to possibly third week of May, possibly to the first week of June. It doesn't compete, it will compete with less caravans. And there's many reasons that I think the weather may still be cooler. There's lots of reasons for the study, and we're going to move forward with that. And, and once we get a feasibility study on it, then we'll take a, take a vote within the region and see whether or not, I know we don't need to vote in the region since it'll come from a committee. But if it looks like we get enough straw poll support, then we will, we will move forward with that. The second thing that we're doing is I'm, I'm also putting together a study. We'll announce this at the region rally that we want to put together a special event, region rally, not a, not a business meeting rally, but for the 2024 solar eclipse will be moving right straight through central Indiana. And we have the ways and means to put together a rally that I think we could get, that would be very well attended, although it will be early April. I'm always ready to get my Airstream out, whether there's snow on it. So it doesn't matter to me. So we're, we're looking at that. I, I'm really proud of John Deegan, of the work that he's done behind me, setting up, updating our email list, communications, and moving forward. He's got great ideas for, for region rallies in 2003 or 2004 and 25. So moving forward, I've got goals to increase attendance, and, and I'll be out to see all of the clubs. So very good. That's all I got.
Thanks, Artie. That's great. Okay, region six.
Hey, thanks, Eric. Just really quickly, I want to apologize to the board for my late coming in on the IBT, but I was literally on the George Washington Bridge getting out of the Bronx. And I, I, I can't remember ever being this nervous driving before. But anyway, that's, that's my valid excuse. Other than that, region six is doing really well. We have the, the old time Fiddles Rally coming up in late September, first of October, followed by the region six rally, followed by Jan's rally down in Texarkana, not Texarkana. I'm getting goofed up here. Anyway, Airstream's on the square rally. So please, uh, please safe travels to everybody and pray for the madness. Bye bye.
Thanks, Larry. All right, region seven.
Okay, we have our little mini rally in Manistee coming up in September. We love technology. We have our little mini rally coming up at the end of September in Manistee. I'm pretty excited about that. But I'm most excited that I do have a date for our region seven rally next year. And our theme is going to be spring into fall in Spring Green, Spring Green, Wisconsin. My husband's a huge Frank Lloyd Wright fan, so of course we'll be going to Taliesin among other items. So that was what my big compliment this week was, was getting a date and a location for that.
Thanks, Cinder. All right, region eight.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to echo what several said. This has been a great IBT meeting. It seems like it's going very smoothly. I appreciate that. I was going to introduce our new region eight second VP. His name is Ed O'Connor. He was on the group, but I think he's had to check out a little early. But we're very happy to have a new second VP. We haven't had a second VP since I was the second VP. So it's been quite a while. We're excited about that. We're very excited to see the international rally coming to region eight in '24. Look forward to that. Since I live fairly close to it, I have already talked to my wife about, you know, I'll probably have to do a little extra blah, blah. And she has endorsed the idea. So there you go. We've got good support. That's all that's, that's all I need is my wife's support, and then I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. All right, region nine.
Hi, just want to make sure everyone welcomes Tracy Elkins. She is our new.
Hi, just want to make sure everyone welcomes Tracy Elkins. She is our new first VP. She's been here all along. So uh, we're looking for a second VP and I know somebody wonderful will step up. A big thank you for this um. Uh, process that Pear and Karen are undertaking to, I love their word, retool. The special committees we're undergoing, uh, launching into that. Actually, Tracy's gonna take a look at that for us. And we're going through that same process. So I surely appreciate. The process they're showing us, the procedure. Uh, it's been quite helpful to me. Um, uh, anyway, that's all that, uh, there's many more things going on, but uh, those are two things I wanted to point out and say, uh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nancy. Region 10. I believe you're muted, Kathy.
Thank you. Uh, region 10 is clicking right along. Our rally um, uh, schedule's gone great. You know, we're probably 50, 60 rallies total. Throughout the region now, um, and lots getting planned for next year. Um, I am at the beginning of my installation rallies, which will start this weekend. I will go as far north as Lone Butte, British Columbia. As far east as Glacier and then down into central Oregon uh for about 4,000 miles just to cover my territory. We did not have anyone traveling uh to visit the clubs due to COVID and the border closure the last couple of years. And I'm just getting the nicest feedback from people saying, we are so glad to see leadership out and listening to us and asking our opinions on things. So anyway. That was it. Uh, one other thing, we do have a new membership chair. And one of the things that really surprised me is we have 240 members at large in my region. Uh, it's partly a function that our uh local airstream dealer gives free memberships. And I think a lot of people don't end up joining the clubs. To me, the value is in joining a club because that's where you make your friendships. Get to enjoy the fun rallies and really get connected. So the new membership chair is reaching out to every one of those. To uh be kind of the uh contact person for them for their questions. And I think it's going to be a very successful program. Thanks again. Um, really enjoyed this format today.
Thanks, Kathy. All right, region 12.
Yes, good uh morning or good afternoon, depending on where you are.
Eleven, yes.
First of all, I want to welcome uh our new second vice president, Julie Cook. And welcome her to uh the IBT meeting. Is taken over as the new president of the, well, sorry about that cat. Uh, new president of the New Mexico unit. And Denise Busby, who's the president of the Wyoming unit, is having the first rally in a few years in September. And I'll try and keep this short because um I've got bad internet connectivity, so that's it.
Thanks, even. Uh, region 12.
Um, let's see, so. Eric and I are still making our way back. We, we shall get there soon. Um, region 12, uh, we are having our region rally next month. Um, so. Uh, yeah, Eric and I have to be home by September. Um, the, and I've mentioned this before. Uh, the region rally is in the um, uh, San Diego um mission uh uh area where. Um, we will be hosting our rally at the Bay Fair uh Thunderboat Races. So we're really excited about that. We're hoping to um make that a national um event rally. Uh, sometime in the future, if we can um uh work on that, that um, that is our goal. Um, and um. And why we, we picked this um site uh to do our region rally. Other than that, I don't have much more to report on rally. Um, information, but I am really pleased at how um. Sort of, and I don't want to say informal this meeting has been, but it has run really well and I'm really um happy with um. With the, with the, with the style, if if you will. Um, so um, congratulations to everyone for, for being comfortable to speaking. Um, and and kind of, you know, there, there are some tough subjects sometimes that we have and I, I really appreciate everyone's feedback on this. That's it.
Thanks, Laverne. Okay, so I'm gonna call an op. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Mr. President. Uh, so what was the decision on this motion? Do, do you want me to present this motion? Hello?
Yeah, I was just, I was just uh going to um address this. What I want to do in the interest of time, we've been at this for three hours now. Um. I'm gonna work with Tom and Joanne and Lori to see how much we can do electronically. There's two critical motions. And we'll see if we can get electronic vote on this from y'all. If not, we'll figure something else out. But I think at three hours, I think we're pretty much done. Um, a couple things I'm gonna say before we sign off is that first, I'm gonna be setting up a survey on Board Effect. Um, such that all of you can reply back anonymously. Um, on sort of how this works, our IBT meeting works, our agenda works and some feedback for upcoming meetings. So that'll be going up. Board impact shortly. And the last thing on board impact, um, there was some question, I forgot to bring this up. About do we want to acquire more licenses? Right now, we have enough licenses for the board. Uh, plus a couple of people, plus the first VPs. It would cost about another $500 per year. Um, to buy another bundle of 20 to cover the rest of the VPs. And. I'm not really sure how we could, okay, hands up, good. Karen first and Brad.
I would like to move that we add $500 to the budget to purchase the additional 20 Board Effect licenses.
I second that.
That was easy. Thank you, guys. All right, um, so we have a motion, a second uh. Discussion. I'm gonna go to Terry and then Pear.
I just wanted to express my support for that. I think when you're a vice president of any kind and you're learning, it's so important to be included in things. So I agree with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Pear.
Yeah, I second that comment. It's really important that the second VPs feel included in this and that we don't have a special requirement to forward messages and stuff like that. They're all part of it.
Thanks, Brad. Other comments? Okay, great. So we. So we, we have motion, second discussion. Uh, all in favor, say aye on adding 500 bucks to the, to the budget.
Aye.
Aye, raise your hand. Okay, great. Uh, in, any opposed? Any opposed? Like I heard a grunt, but it sounds like we passed on the, on the majority. So I appreciate that. Uh, so we'll add those on and uh Lori or some other team will get information out to your, your VPs. All right. Yeah, great idea. Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Um, all right, I think that's it, you guys. So we're done for the day. Again, I apologize for the long meeting, but I hope you feel we covered a lot and we use your time officially. So with.